Ahead of everyone else.
Sorry, I was geeking out over there.
I know, I'm excited to learn more about that.
Give me a moment.
Great, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting of April 25th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Standing as you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we have an interesting meeting tonight, so I'm going to glance over, oh, nothing? Sorry, I'm looking at Betty Yonkey. Do we have any public comment tonight? Right, super, that'll save some time. I'll skip right over to the President's Superintendent's message. Are you ready, sir?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to bring your attention to the upcoming operating millage that is proposed on the May 2 election, and I'm asking you to vote in this upcoming May 2 election. Selenary Schools will be on the ballot for an operating millage renewal. It's not a bond, it's a 10-year millage renewal proposal that's part of the normal day-to-day funding structure for Michigan school districts. If you only own one home, you would not pay this millage. Further, it would help SAS continue to generate a little over $8.5 million annually for the general operating budget. So again, we'd like everybody to vote in the upcoming May 2 election. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lott. We have no public comment in the first section of the evening, but we do have one extended public comment. Sarah Saylor and Bonnie Lee. I'll let you introduce yourselves and everything.
All right, well, good evening, Celine Area Schools Board of Education. My name is Sarah Saylor. I'm the Children's Savings Account Coordinator for the Washtenaw Intermediate School District, and I'm joined tonight by my colleagues Bonnie Lee at the WISD as well, and our colleague from Washtenaw County, Sharnessa Williams. So we're excited to be here with you tonight to share about a new program that we are launching this spring called My Future Fund. All right, we can go to the next scroll down, thank you. All right, My Future Fund is an exciting new program that will give students enrolled in Washtenaw County Public Schools, including Celine Area Schools and participating charter schools, a jumpstart on saving and planning for future college or career training. My Future Fund is structured as a children's savings account program, a research-based approach that helps students and families build assets for future post-secondary educational expenses. Washtenaw Intermediate School District operates the program with initial funding from a generous investment by Washtenaw County Government of $2.9 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as $3.78 million from their general fund. The Board of Commissioners has provided funding over the next four years as part of their commitment to equity in Washtenaw County. And I do want to draw your attention there, is that your place's the slide deck as well as an MOU that we'll talk about in a little bit? We are supported by a community advisory group that is made up of stakeholders from across the county, including Celine's own Ryan Rowe. And these are groups of folks that are helping us give feedback and insight as we launch this program. So on the next slide, the goals of the My Future Fund program seek to provide equitable opportunities to local students and families, and are backed by the research about children's savings accounts. Our ambitious goals are to increase college expectations, increase the number of students completing post-secondary education, bring parents into the financial mainstream, and also address those educational disparities that were exacerbated by COVID. Through the My Future Fund program, we will provide both a jumpstart for families as they save, as well as provide financial education and resources so families and students can begin to take those small steps towards their goals. We will do this in several different ways. The first way is through a My Future Fund account. All eligible elementary students will automatically receive a free My Future Fund account with a $25 starting deposit. These funds are pooled together and held on behalf of students by the Michigan Education Savings Program and managed by TIA Craft Tuition Financing. Because of the way the account is structured, families cannot add directly to this set of savings, so the funds from the county will go into this account that is held by MESP. Families can view their savings in the My Future Fund Family Portal and can also connect their own MESP Savings Investment Account to the portal, so they can see all of their savings in one spot. We hope to raise additional funds to continue to add to these accounts over time. Students will be able to withdraw their My Future Fund dollars for qualified college and career expenses after high school. In addition to that, we also have an additional deposit of $475 that is based on a family's income. This is using time-limited pandemic relief funds to provide that extra boost to students who are in low-income families. We'll be using information from, to determine the student's eligibility, we will need parent and guardian consent because we are using the student supplemental nutrition eligibility status to determine if they are eligible for this additional deposit, which is tied to either their free and reduced lunch application or if they have been directly certified, gone through the direct certification process. These one-time deposits run through the 2025-2026 school year. The third piece of our program is the ongoing support to families to provide the tools and resources so that they can create their own plan for saving and preparing for college and career training. We're partnering with the Michigan Education Savings Program to help families open their own individual investment accounts, and as I shared a minute ago, they can be linked in the My Future Fund Family Portal. We also will host workshops and events for schools and communities around financial education for saving for college and career training. And we're really excited to collaborate with schools on financial literacy and career development instruction. So just a little bit more about the My Future Fund account. So elementary students who are enrolled in a Washtenaw Public School District or a participating public school academy will automatically receive the account. Tentatively, all first through fifth grades, or sorry, tentatively, all students in first and fifth grade in Celine Area Schools will be enrolled this year to get an account, and then we'll add students over the next four years. We're using the October enrollment information to determine the students that get the accounts this spring, and then next year, anyone who came to school after that will roll them in when we do the next enrollment. Families will have the opportunity to opt out if they do not want to participate in this program. So on this slide, you can just see the next slide is about, if you're more of a visual person, sort of the enrollment schedule as we move forward, our tentative enrollment schedule. So what we're looking, what we are looking for in a partnership is we know that schools are a key partner to this work, and the MOU that I've provided to you tonight outlines the roles and responsibilities both of My Future Fund as well as your school district. We're asking that you sign this MOU, a representative from your board signs this by mid-May, so that we're able to launch this program after that. Our team handles operations, communications, and logistics related to the program, and we're looking to you to provide that data approval, that we're pulling that directory information to populate the students' accounts, provide outreach support, like backpack flyers that we'll have for you, and collaboration on financial literacy and career development activities. Over the next four years, there, we estimate that 2,700 students will receive an account with over $2,000, sorry, over $225,000 in them for college and career savings. We have an ambitious timeline. We're finalizing the program components and sharing about MOUs with boards this month. We hope to launch in May with a first round of just initially sharing with families that this is coming, giving them an opportunity to opt out and sign that permission form for that additional deposit. Then they'll get their accounts this summer and be able to log in and see their savings, their jump-started savings. And then we'll continue to roll out to the next group of kids in 2024. This is a really, I think, an exciting opportunity across our county to come together to support students as they envision their futures and support families on taking those small steps to get students to their goals. And so I'm excited to collaborate with Celine Area Schools on this project. I know this is a public commentary section, so that if you have questions, though, we can figure out a way for us to be in further conversation after this time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'm going to ask Allison, I'm going to put you on the spot, would you introduce our student showcase?
I mean, how dramatic do you want me to be? Like, should I get the announcer voice?
Oh, full drama, please.
I don't think final countdown will be necessary. All right, Neil, you can stand up, I'm sorry, I don't mean to torture you. This is Neil Maldol, he is one of my fellow classmates, and he is here tonight to talk about some of his science projects. Seems like too small of a word, but frankly, that's what I can think of right now, so that's all I got, I'm sorry.
Perfect.
There we go. Okay, sorry. Thank you for that introduction, and I wanted to, again, thank you all for having me here and giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm very excited to be here. So today, I'm Neil Maldol, I'm a senior at Celine High School, and I would like to tell you today about my journey with Regeneron STS. So, did I do some, there we go, okay. So first, I wanted to start with a little bit about my research project. I began my research project in April of 2020, and I worked with my mentor, Dr. Aaron Frank. He was a professor of biophysics at the University of Michigan, and I actually met him a couple of years prior to that at a STEM camp for kids, and he had come and talked about his research, and we kind of got into contact and had been discussing just his work, and a couple of years later, we decided to collaborate on this project. So it was a very exciting opportunity for me, and it was on a topic of RNA, which is something that's a very up-and-coming topic in biology, it's only now being well-understood. And it was something that was very exciting for me to kind of get started on. So my research is about trying to understand the structure of RNA. RNA is, like DNA, it's a part of a class of biomolecules called nucleic acids, and it's essentially this polymer which has a bunch of different base pairs in a given sequence. And it's very, it's fairly simple to figure out what the sequence of an RNA is, but it's a much, much more difficult problem to kind of, from that extrapolate to find out how the RNA is structured. And it's actually still full, a full understanding of how RNA is structured, as well as how protein is structured, is an open question in biology. So my research was kind of trying to understand, given a structure, given a sequence of RNA, can we try to predict how the different bases will pair with each other? Because RNA actually will pair with itself and kind of loop to itself to form these complicated structures. And my research was trying to understand how those structures form, and then essentially, the next step would be to kind of understand why those structures form. And RNA, to kind of highlight its importance, it was for a long time thought to be a messenger molecule. It goes, it, there's a process called transcription where it kind of copies DNA, and then it goes and it makes proteins. And that was kind of our understanding of RNA for a very long time, until in the early 1980s, there was a series of discoveries, starting with the discovery of RNA's catalytic activity, its ability to speed up cellular reactions. And from then, there've been a whole set of activities, and we now understand that RNA can do almost everything. It can control gene expression, it can turn on and off the production of metabolites in a cell, like small molecules, it can bind to and turn on and off the function of molecules, it can catalyze reactions, it can store genetic material. So really, the idea of my project was to now, now that we know all of this about RNA, to kind of understand its structure. So I worked with Dr. Frank for two years on this project, and I spent about four hours a week during school, this, while, that was a year where I had quite a bit of class, of work with dual enrollment math classes, honors math classes at the University of Michigan. And I was really excited about my project firstly, because it was interdisciplinary. It kind of took from a lot of different subjects and brought it all together. And after two years, I was very excited and honored to be the first author on our publication in the Journal of Physical Chemistry A, which, there, okay, that's the beginning of our paper, and yeah, that was a very exciting moment for me and something I was very honored to be a part of. So after I finished publishing, after my paper was published, I applied for the Davidson Fellowship, which is a scholarship for students under the age of 18 who performed graduate-level research that was able to impact society in some way. And I was deeply honored to be selected as one of the 2022 Davidson Fellows. And when I went to the Davidson Fellows Retreat in Cambridge, Massachusetts, I met with the other fellows, who, many, some of whom were actually, had applied to Regeneron STS, and some of them had actually become finalists in the years past. So they encouraged me to apply, and I kind of read more about the competition and got really excited about it, talking about how, I guess I'll move on and talk about what is Regeneron STS. It is considered to be the nation's oldest and most prestigious science and math competition, and it was founded in 1942 by the Westinghouse Electric Corporation and continued to be the Westinghouse Science Talent Search until the 1990s, when I think 1996 was Intel took over sponsorship, and it was the Intel Science Talent Search until 2017 was the first year it was sponsored by Regeneron. And actually, interestingly, the two co-founders of Regeneron had met each other at the Westinghouse Science Talent Search. So it's kind of a testament to the ability of the STS program to kind of bring people together for research. And alumni of the competition have won many prestigious awards, some of which are listed there. So to apply to this competition, I had to fill out something called the Mega Form, which I call here the Mega Form of Death, because it was an 80-page application. It required, so I submitted a 20-page research report, kind of detailing my research, and the, a full report detailing the research I did and the results I obtained. In addition, I had to fill out this large application talking about different scientific topics. I had to write essays on where I thought the next frontier in science would be, and kind of to judge scientific thought. And most people start this application a year and a half in advance, but since I only heard about it at the Davidson Fellows Retreat, and this is the only year I can apply, I had to do this entire application in six weeks, which was interesting, to say the least, but I was able to finish. And so the process for how, to kind of tell you how big this application is, about 18,000 to 20,000 students start the application, but only less than 2,000 will actually finish the full application. And to finish the application, you have to have fully written and basically publishable research. Of those 2,000 who finish the application, 300 are chosen as Regeneron scholars. And to be chosen for the Regeneron scholarship, you get an award of $2,000, and your school gets an award of $2,000 for STEM education. And then of the 300 scholars, 40 are chosen as finalists. And the finalists are allowed, are given the opportunity to go to Washington DC. And there, there's a lot of activities for the finalists to get to know each other, but there are also, this is also where they complete the final judging. So the finals week, we stay in a hotel in Washington DC, and we go through three days of a rigorous judging process. Two of the days are what are called panel judging. So there are 16 judges who are all, who are all very distinguished scientists, mathematicians, engineers. In fact, one of the judges was actually a MacArthur Fellow, which was really cool to meet her, and also kind of intimidating. And so they have these judging sessions where you go to a panel, in front of a panel of two to three judges, and they ask you quite difficult questions in their own field of study to see your breadth of knowledge. And so I, so there's two days of this where you go in front of different panels of judges, and you answer a series of questions in math, biology, chemistry, physics, engineering, economics, environmental science. And they ask you these sets of questions, and you have no idea what they're going to ask, and you kind of just have to use your understanding to figure out the problems they give you. And so we had, the third day of judging was what is called project judging. So that is where, I have my poster board over there, and that is where you go and you kind of speak to the judges, and the different, it's more of a science fair kind of thing, except the, it's the same 16 judges, and they'll come around, and you have to kind of talk about your research, and then they'll ask you questions to try to find holes in your research, and you have to kind of defend it. So I, that was, overall, it was a fairly stressful process, but also something that I thought was very formative in the sense that it really kind of developed, developed scientific thought in a very nice way, and also in a lot of ways was just a growth experience for me to kind of go through a process like that, which is quite unique, and something that you see more in like academia, which is the pathway I hope to pursue. And in addition, we had many exciting activities to kind of take, to kind of break up these judging sessions, and we were able to kind of bond as a group of 40 finalists from all across the country. And so the, after this, so after we had our judging sessions, we had our STS award ceremony, and it was held on Pi Day at the National Building Museum. And before the actual ceremony, we presented our work to the different people. They had quite a few, just scientists and dignitaries from across the country who were able to come. The president of Caltech was there, which was pretty interesting, and quite a few other notable scientists and engineers and policymakers were there, which was quite cool. And so the top, in the final portion of the ceremony, the top 10 winners were announced. And yeah, that's my face when I won, which is, which is still kind of funny to look at, but that is truly how I felt at the time, and, and actually, per request of Dr. Lott, I included a clip of me winning, so here we go. If it'll play, I don't know. Should, okay, there we go. Oh, it says "security warning," you have to hit "enable content" at the top right. Down. Maybe, yeah. I apologize, this worked on my computer, so I'm sorry if I screwed something up. It should be, yeah, I made it as an unlisted YouTube video, so. Well, yeah, okay, we can, we can skip this, but I'm sorry. Okay, but I just wanted to thank you, and also just take a minute to thank some of the people that were really important in this process. I think first and foremost, I'd like to thank my parents, my mom is actually right here, and they've played such a, they've played such a big role in my education and encouraging me to pursue science, and I cannot thank them enough for everything they've done to get me here. Also, I would like to thank the high school. It's really important to kind of, to have a public school where you're able to kind of grow in science, and you have teachers and administrators that will support you on your way. And I'd also like to especially thank my counselor, Mr. Bruckman, who really did a lot to make my schedule work and make all of this possible. And I think Celine High School has done so much for me, and I cannot thank Celine enough, so. I'd like to end on that, but thank you again for having me here. It's been very exciting to present, and I really enjoyed this. Thank you.
Neil, can you, thank you. Can you, can you answer a few softball questions?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I say softball, I say softball because, I say softball because usually, usually the blood sport of scholarship happens when you get the reviewers of your paper go over it and point out a few holes. But there you have, in front of 16 professors, having to, having them note holes in your research. Now, did they find any?
They, okay, so there were a couple points in methodology where I agree that there, that we could have made certain improvements, but the overall conclusion was that the methodology was still strong enough to support the conclusions. So I agree, like, I feel like any good research project, you can find places to improve. And I was very excited, interesting to discuss that with them, but overall, I think the work itself and the conclusions itself were pretty, stood pretty strong.
Well, that's the great thing about science at that level, is nothing's perfect.
Exactly.
That's why it's cutting edge, it's the ragged edge. Well, I appreciate that, I'll open up to the board if they have any questions. Go, please.
I was just going to ask, because this is not my area, and I will let Mr. Gerby, who I'm sure is chomping at the bit, but just, just a couple things I was going to say, and then I wanted to ask you a question too, but you were talking about how they really were mining you for your breadth of knowledge, like, not just in this area, but, but across the board, and then you noted just how strong the science teachers were in supporting you in Celine, so I just think that that's, that was an incredible opportunity for you to showcase, not just this one. um, opportunity for you to showcase, not just this one area, but everything. And, um, I also heard on the way in here that, at one point, you had been considering a career in, um, special education, and I know from my, my own two children, that you're a part of the, um, Connecting Club, and I think that what that tells me, combined with the research that you presented to us tonight and the award, it tells me that not only are you an incredibly brilliant person, but you have a real heart for people. And when you were talking about the research and saying a lot of words that I didn't understand, but, I will work to understand more, but when you were talking, um, you did mention things that did connect to me and to my family, and so I just, I feel like because of your mind and because of your heart, you're going to impact all of our lives here and beyond, and so I just want to thank you for that, and so...
Thank you, that means so much.
And then I just want to know what's next for you, Neil?
So, yeah, um, I'm, I committed to the University of Michigan, and, yes, go Blue, and I'm very, very excited to go there. I'm actually going to major, one of my majors will be in biophysics, and I'm going to double major also in statistics. And my professor actually left the university unfortunately, but he got a really nice job as the head of computational chemistry at a biotech firm. But I hope to continue research, especially research in RNA, as it's such an up and coming field, and something that I think my early exposure to will really help me move on and work with in the future. So I hope to, I hope to continue that research and to continue working. The eventual goal is to become a physician-scientist, where I'm both able to work, uh, in a lab, kind of creating and working with the more basic sciences, but also work with other people and have that human connection as well. And that's something, that's very important to me, and that's really my plan for the future. It's a very long road ahead, but one that I'm very excited about.
Well, I'm very excited too, I can't wait. Thank you so much for sharing with us tonight.
Thank you.
Neil, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll back up on that, and, uh, first of all, I am really glad we record our meetings, because your explanation of protein synthesis at the beginning of this meeting, spot on and awesome.
Thank you.
So, I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate your focus on RNA, right? And, you know, we talked about the fact that, like, this is an evolving science, and so where we can keep going and pushing, and you and I were talking about base pairs, and then how can we manipulate base pairs now to, to try to do different things? And so, anyway, so, I, I tell you, I, I, I don't have too much to add on to, other than what Jenny said, but the reality for me is that you're a Celine student, right? And so, like, you reflect upon us incredibly, when you go to Washington, when you go to, you know, you're talking about being in Cambridge and all those kinds of things like that, that's really, that, that makes me feel good to send my kids here, because we produce someone like you, okay? And, you know, talk about connect, talking about all those different ways in which you're contributing to, to Celine, so I really want you to, to know that, okay? Um, I am gonna dork out for a second, Ms. Stu, Ms., so Ms. Stukey's in, well, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna give, Ms. Stukey's in the room, and, um, and, you know, other, Ms. Stag, Mr. Stukey...
Both Ms. Stukey and Mr. Stukey are amazing.
And, you know, Mrs. Stagger, and, like, just, we have extraordinary educators in our school, and the reality is, I don't think these students get here without them. Uh, and so, I'm so glad that you're here and you're celebrating, and your students accomplish, because that's what I would want to do, right? As a, as a Manchester person, I'd want, you know, one of my man, if, if, I tell you this, like, we'd have a plaque, you know, or like a poster of you on the wall, you know? But, um, anyway, long story short, there's that. But now, tell me where, like, you want to eventually end up with this RNA research? Like, where, where do you see this going, and what boundaries do you want to push on it?
Yeah, so, there are quite a few, uh, directions in which RNA research can go, and some of them are receiving comparatively less attention than I, I feel they should receive. And so, for example, one of the big, uh, areas of RNA research is, um, are small molecules that are able to turn on and off gene expression. So, the discovery of small interfering RNA and microRNAs, which together create this effect called RNA interference, that actually won a couple of Nobel Prizes. And, um, that discovery was really revolutionary, in the sense that it told us that RNA is able to go bind to and turn off, uh, turn off certain genes. So, in many cases, genetic diseases are caused by genes producing proteins that have the wrong structure, and therefore have the wrong function. So a couple approaches to that are, one, we can just try to use an RNA, design an RNA molecule that's able to bind to the mRNA transcript, transcribe from the DNA, and is able to effectively silence that. And through that RNA interference, we can actually cure this disease by just turning off the production of a misformed protein. Another effect, another, uh, area being studied is that of RNA aptmers, which are RNA molecules that bind to non-nucleic acid molecules, like proteins and carbohydrates. And these are being studied for a couple reasons. One, they are able to bind to certain targets, they can deliver, uh, they can deliver certain materials to certain targets, they can, again, it's another approach, you, instead of binding to the produ, producer of the protein, you can just bind to the protein and turn it off. But something that I feel is very interesting is that these molecules, because they're RNA, have such low immunogenic, immunogenicity, that they can actually, uh, they don't, they elicit almost no immune response in host cells. So, as a result, we can actually use them to replace monoclonal antibodies, which, while they're a very incredible tool in the pharmaceutical industry, monoclonal antibodies also have certain drawbacks, in the sense that we produce them, first of all, the methods with which they, we produce them are good, but they are not as adaptable as we would like, and we can kind of create hybrid antibodies, but the process of doing so is quite laborious and also quite limited, in the sense, on RNA, we can just design a target very cheaply, and have it bind to a molecule, and have it turn off, uh, turn off a molecule, we can have it bind and elicit an immune response, so there's actually investigation into our, using RNA molecules to, to use innate immunity to fight certain diseases. Cancer actually, um, not using RNA, but a couple years ago, the Nobel Prize in Medicine was awarded to certain scientists who were able to leverage natural immunity to fight cancer. And if we can kind of augment our body's natural immune response by using RNA molecules to tell the body where to go and where to attack, that is, I, in my opinion, a revolutionary thing in biology as a whole and in biomedical sciences.
Is that aspirational enough for you?
Oh my gosh. Wait, what did you, did you say RNA aptmers?
Aptmers, A-P-T-M-E-R-S.
A-P-T-M-E-R-S?
Yeah, aptmers.
This is gonna show up in his class.
The student has become the teacher, folks. [inaudible].
I keep wanting to call you Dr. Maugold, but...
That's Dr. Maugold.
I know, I know. Good, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was your mic drop?
Yeah, like, wow.
So I'm gonna go down the other side, unless you have something to...
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, you know, I'll, I'll admit it, you're way above my head here, and, uh, I'm just really impressed, this is, this is amazing.
Thank you, thank you.
So I followed your story, and I thought I was impressed before, but then watching what you went through and the breadth of this program, I'm even more impressed. So a couple of things, I think it's really interesting to think about RNA and, um, the research, I mean, when you think about the fact that, you know, I don't know, 20 years ago, someone proposed, uh, mRNA vaccines, and they were sort of laughed out of the water, and then they've had this huge application during this pandemic. It is really fascinating and, um, and prescient that you are also investigating this, so I would like to both congratulate you, tell you how proud I am of you, and invite you, uh, to consider pediatrics. And your physician-science journey, because, I mean, really, the applications, you know, vaccination, congenital disease, all the really interesting, cool applications, biochemical, genetics, so, and you get to hang out with kids, which it sounds like you like to do. So, anytime, though, you'll probably just like, be like, "Oh yeah, I'm just gonna cure that patient of yours, Dr. Gold." But yeah, a not at all unserious, uh, plug for my profession, uh, plus your PhD that I'm certain you're headed toward. And I also just have one quick question, in all seriousness, at the elementary level, obviously I'm guessing your mom is a scientist, and you've had parents who did an amazing job of opening up these opportunities, but when you were, um, one interest I have is how to get small kids interested in science.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think sometimes, um, that can be kind of tough, to be honest with you. I'm just wondering if you had any insight for us as a board, or, um, you know, as educators, as to how to sort of support young scientists? I know we have science fairs and there's a lot that we do, but what experiences did you have, if you can think back to when you were quite small?
Yeah.
Uh, that helped, you know, develop this brilliance that you have in science?
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, so, like, like I mentioned, my mom's a doctor, and my dad is actually an engineer, so both of them work in the STEM fields. And so, from a young age, they kind of encouraged me to pursue the sciences, we always went to these science museums, and I saw these really cool demonstrations, and at first it was like, uh, it was just so cool to see all these things, and then that kind of created a natural curiosity to why, and I think that was something that was very important to me, was kind of just seeing science happen and always being taught to question things. And I think that that's something that can be implemented at any level, at, starting at elementary and even further, just to try to encourage students to question things around them. And things we take for granted have such deep explanations, like, I always try to talk about gravity, I don't fully understand how Einstein's General Theory of Relativity, I'm trying to, but it just has such, there's so many layers, and I think trying to start at a very young age, and kind of try, try to promote that scientific thought is very important. The other thing is that I participated in Science Olympiad, starting at the elementary level, the Washnaw actually, I think, has the biggest one in the country. And both my parents, my mom and my dad, served as coaches for some of the different events I was in. And I, I thought that that was also an experience, it taught me something very different from what I was learning in the classroom, but something that kind of came on and kind of I was able to blend in with some of the things I was learning later on, and I think that really improved my, both my just excitement and interest in science, as well as kind of, uh, kind of also just made learning science at a higher level easier, to kind of get an exposure to that starting young. So, that, that's really what I would say, as my, as what I think was important for me, and of course, I think different things are important for different people, but that's just my own perspective as well. Thank you.
So, um, congratulations.
Thank you.
I know we were super proud here in Celine, and I hope that you felt that, um, and, uh, thank you to mom and dad, right?
Absolutely.
Um, and their involvement, and, um, I'm sure they're super proud. Um, so, I, once upon a time, was, uh, working on my degree in environmental science at Virginia Tech, and I ended up switching my major. If I had a science teacher like you, [laughing], talking about RNA and showing the passion that you have, um, and the excitement, I, I would have totally, you know, gotten that degree, but, um, yeah, I, I could just listen to you all night, talking about RNA, so...
Thank you.
And I'm sure you made some really good, um, networking oppor, had really good networking opportunities, and...
Absolutely.
You're only in high school. So, um, congratulations, and keep doing what you're doing, and, um, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I want you to do me a favor, it can be tonight, tomorrow, whatever, I want you to go back and I want you to watch the live stream, and I want you to watch yourself, because A, you have an infectious smile.
Thank you.
And it does show Susan's word about passion is exactly correct. Um, so I'm at Ross, so I'm not trying to try to poach you from those other two departments, but you can always, you can always stop by our building. Um, but we talk about purpose-driven leadership, and about being passionate, about studying what you care about, and solving for the world's problems in, in the, in the areas that you care about, and so when you go back and you watch it, you'll, you'll see those sparks, and you'll see that smile, you'll also see Principal Stagger beaming at you, behind you, and your mom, and the rest of the audience. The other thing that you should keep in mind too, is that mentor of yours, networks are gonna be very, very important to you, something else we teach there, um, so please keep in contact with, um, with him or her, I'm sorry, it was a gentleman?
Uh, yes, it's a, uh, yes.
Yep, okay, keep in contact with him, keep in contact with all of us here in Celine, and, and build your network to really drive towards your purpose, and to solve some really, really big problems when you think about genetic disease and all that stuff. Very good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We'll, uh, we'll let you take your time to take down your poster, your trifold, and thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, and again, just, I so enjoyed being here, thank you.
Are you doing research over there? Some of us learned how to spell RNA tonight. Uh, I would like to go back a step, uh, we needed to approve the agenda, uh, so items may be added or deleted from the agenda, and/or the order can be changed at the request of an individual, I guess I just changed the order. Uh, the agenda must be approved before proceeding further, do we have anyone, uh, making that motion to approve?
I'll approve the amended agenda.
Support? Eastep?
Eastep, thank you very much, all in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. All in favor then, thank you very much. Um, we have one scheduled report this evening, you're on.
Good luck, Brian.
No, I'm just saying, what, following that?
Oh yeah, good luck following that, did you, do you?
No pressure.
I already heard the complaints before you came into the room, that, that he sucked all the IQ out of the room somehow. You'll be fine, you'll be, you've got charts, you've got graphs, you've... Uh, the, the teaching and, this is the teaching, teaching and learning update?
I can design.
Yeah, no, no.
You out.
You're pretty smart too, Caroline.
Yeah, they are.
And, uh, Ms. Davis, we'll let you introduce the rest of your presenting team.
Absolutely, yes, it, I was, um, I definitely had the giggles back there, because it is this double-edged sword of this immense pride for Celine Area Schools and the teaching and learning opportunities, kindergarten through age 26, and the, like, guffaw at, "Oh, we have to present after Neil, okay." I cannot say that this is going to be as awe-inspiring, although I do hope you find it really interesting, um, because we are here for our teaching and learning spring slash winter update for District Continuous Improvement, and I have with me tonight Caroline Stout, who is our District MTSS Coordinator, as well as Beth Russo, who is our Secondary MTSS Coordinator, and as you can see, Beth is a little under the weather today, so please, um, give us some grace as the fact that she does not have a voice. So Caroline and I are taking over part of her presentation, and she will be able to answer questions, but, uh, we'll leave those to the end, so she's the last person to speak into the microphone. Um, so with that, um, this report serves as both our Michigan Continuous Improvement Update, as well as our 98B Goal Update per legislation, um, and we are excited to share with you our journey, and I just want to start by centering you on what that journey is, because if you are not an avid follower of board meetings, and haven't been tracking since last, um, July, uh, we did start with the new, um, Continuous Improvement Cycle this school year, and we started with our orange circle all the way to the left, setting up for success, where we'd established our goals, um, and had shared those back in the summer and the fall, um, and now we have moved through the year, and we, um, are at the end, where we are looking at our, starting to look at our end-of-year data, reflecting on the growth and areas for continued improvement, and then of course, reflecting and revising our plans for the upcoming school year. So we have a lot of great pieces in place, um, we cannot share with you all of the things that are going on, so tonight, we are going to be highlighting primarily the Secondary MTSS, um, journey for this year, which is a newly appointed position, and, um, some of our updated data from literacy and math K-8, um, alongside of, um, some of the action steps that we have taken. I think. So, just quickly, we have a hand, uh, two goals, as well as building strategies, just again, to orient to our plan itself. Um, our district goal this year is to increase overall rates of mastery, um, in reading and math, as measured by our local assessments and course-level grades, and then alongside of this, we have a complementary goal related to strengthening social-emotional support models, um, to positively impact our student and staff reporting, uh, their perceptions of self, our wellness within the school district itself. And then each building has been working on individual building goals that are a combination of, um, if you, if you read into them, the academics and the social-emotional wellness, for the sake of time, when we move through that pretty quickly. And then in addition, uh, there are four focus areas that Dr. Lott laid out around academic rigor. academic rigor, creating a culture of equity, civility and unity, and improving, um, um, Celine area schools for the future in regards, regards to building grounds and infrastructure. So these are all the things that we have all been working on throughout the course of this year. Um, and you've heard a lot of information about these in a variety of different reports. And again, our focus today is on our goals, um, related to academics. So one, um, when we think about our approach to our programming to positively impact growth in those goal areas, uh, we were taking a three-tiered approach. So intentional programming, targeted staffing and integrated professional development. You've heard a little bit about those this year. Um, in terms of intentional programming, um, Caroline will be speaking a little bit to some of the summer work that we're doing upcoming. Um, and the MTSS piece with intentional programming has a lot to do with our intervention, um, and opportunities that we make available to students with needs that we have identified. In addition, targeted staffing, when we think about this plan where we were introducing it last year in July, um, that would be a great example of where Beth has come in as our secondary MTSS coordinator. We were intentional and strategic about adding a role to study the secondary, um, needs uh, related to intervention, both academically and socially. And then we've also considered professional development throughout the year, um, integrating early literacy training as well as culture response instructional techniques and then the integrated curriculum review cycles that are reported on before. Throughout the year, we've been paying close attention in our data to growth, of course, how are our students growing as relates to the data that we are collecting? Disproportionality, so you'll see some of that today in the graphs that we have to share, both of those two things. And then reliability. This piece, um, we really are interested in studying our systems and our assessments more holistically to look at how are they reliable, reliably giving us data on how we can make improvements as a district. Um, and that comes up a little bit in our information related to what we've discovered at the secondary level as well. So with that, we'll give, have Beth give a wave. She is. So Beth is, uh, joining us actually from an internal position. She served as a special education teacher consultant in Celine area schools from 2006, or since 2006. Um, and then had previously taught high school and middle school for five years in the Chicago area, certified in social studies and special education. Um, and she had a, uh, her experiences led to her specific interest in the MTSS. And so she joined us as of July 1, uh, this past year. So I'm going to be sharing some of her findings today. So I do want to just give credit because this has been an incredible lift. Um, we have not had a dedicated secondary MTSS coordinator in place in the district. Uh, while we've dabbled in some things, there hasn't been a strategic person responsible for this information, um, and for studying this. So in this first year, Beth's charge really when we sat down and Caroline and I sat down and talked with her was really to take a deep look at the system. What can we be doing better? What do we need to have in place in order to provide the best supports possible? So when thinking about that, the secondary MTSS, uh, model and the elementary model have a lot of things in common. Um, on the left, you can see there that some of the heart of MTSS is really screening. So thinking about screening, um, students in terms of their academic and social emotional needs and triangulating data from a variety of research-based, um, data points and assessments. And then working collaboratively with the teaching teams and administrative teams in the buildings, um, as well as the counseling and wellness professional teams in those buildings to determine what students need, um, and what kinds of interventions would be most beneficial. That alongside of adding interventions and, uh, progress monitoring across time are things that the secondary MTS model, uh, secondary MTSS model, that's going to be tricky throughout, sorry, MTSS model, um, have in common. At the secondary level, um, in terms of some of the differences that you might see, uh, you're, a new acronym this evening, uh, is the Early Warning Intervention and Monitoring System. So I'll be referring to that as EWS. Uh, that data collection at the secondary level is really, uh, looking at attendance behavior as well as course performance. So that's something that we've been studying really closely and, uh, Beth has a number of incredible charts that pulls all of that out. Um, and we're also seeing areas that we can grow as well. And so EWS is an evidence-based process for identifying and monitoring students who are at risk for either disengagement or potential dropout. The EWS process, um, is very similar to a graphic that I have shared with you before the, around the MyKit process, which is essentially starting, uh, with establishing a role and then using some data systems and assessing needs. Um, and that's very similar to the MyKit process that we've been using, um, as a district. So when you think about where we are with secondary MTSS, we're really right now in the assessing needs, um, component. And so something that, uh, we knew would have to happen is that Beth would have to s- to really work with both the middle school and the high school administrative and counseling teams as well as the staff in order to inventory what was already in place as far as systems and interventions to support students. Um, and then we knew that we would need a system to collect the, the data that we are finding in order to be able to study it really thoroughly and then establish and look at the teams that were within those buildings. And something that I, I myself am even forgetting now, um, in almost May of 2023, is that this is of course coming off of the pandemic. So we're looking at three years of disrupted systems and studying because of the, uh, where our focus was in ensuring that our students had the best access to education, um, during the disruption of the pandemic. And then also a number of transitions and, um, challenges that have come up across those years and then bringing it all back into focus in order to really address the needs that are there. Um, so it was an incredible amount of work to, um, gather up all that information and really focus in on what could we do to really best address the needs that we're seeing in the high school and what data do we have to lead us in the right direction so that we're ensuring that our resources, um, tools and staffing are really accomplishing the goals that we're setting out to accomplish. So something that we found, um, is that fantastic as Neil is a great product of, is that we have incredible things happening at the secondary level, like instructionally, great opportunities for students. Um, a lot of staff members, uh, you know, excellent staff members employing different techniques and tools in order to meet student needs. Um, we also recognize that will benefit at the secondary level from having a really systemic intentional approach to doing that. So it's sustainable across time and that it equitably reaches all students. And that is not something, um, that we can say we have right now, uh, but we're definitely working in that direction because one of the things that we would really like to do is be proactive about how we reach students and meet their needs, um, rather than being caught in that cycle of being reactive. And when you don't have a strong system in place, you can be, um, obviously we're reacting, being responsive, we call that in education, to the needs of our students. But we'd like to get ahead of it and in order to do that really well, we need systems in place, um, to be able to monitor that data and track progress across time. So, um, this is something that was, that Beth started, has started to do, uh, is that creating that system to collect EWS. And this is not easy. Um, I'm very appreciative of the fact that that is right there. This is not easy. It might seem, and I know we've got some, um, data gurus in, on the board and then of course, in our community, uh, but we right now in terms of tracking data, our systems, we're not all speaking to each other in the way that we needed them to, to easily pull data. So Caroline and Beth worked tirelessly to hand pull data, cross-reference and create a system, an internal system that they've built themselves in order to monitor, um, student progress and really have great conversations with the high school and middle school administrators and the, their, their teams to talk about student needs and determine, uh, what the next best steps were for supporting those students. So, um, one of the things that's mentioned there is that this is not just a Celine, um, issue. It's actually pretty prevalent at the secondary level. Um, and there's a, a lot of different tools in play, but no real consensus on, you know, what the best tool is. And it's hard to find, there's no magic wand necessarily, um, for this. So the state is working on something, uh, but it's not rolled out, um, all the way yet. And so again, they've come up with a system that we're using internally, um, to inform decision-making and identify students. So this is a work in progress, but one that I feel like they have done a fabulous job on creating, um, in order to identify students, even though it takes hours and hours and hours of time. So with that, when you think about, okay, so now we've got a system, we've studied, we've had really great conversations with the teams at both the middle school and the high school. Um, in the fall, Beth started right away looking at, okay, let's meet the students' needs, who we've identified as right away, who might have, um, risen to the top as students who would benefit from more targeted interventions. Um, so she reestablished the homework hive opportunity at both the middle school and the high school. Uh, this is an after-school program, uh, that is working on work completion and building executive functioning skills. It's staffed by our teachers, um, internally, and those are volunteers who are paid volunteers to work additional hours after school. And those, um, students are determined by the school-based conversations with the building teams as to who would best benefit, um, from that additional time. So the middle school currently, um, has invited 27 students to participate and 16 are actively participating. And the high school has, uh, spots for about 40 students and about 13 students are currently enrolled, um, in terms of actively and then with the highest enrollment at 16. We've maintained our partnership with Great Lakes Tutoring. This is something that we had, um, began, begun during the pandemic and, um, with identified students and have carried through the school year. And using the feedback from both the staff, the t- uh, teams within the buildings and then, um, the, the system that Beth has created to determine who those students are. And in this case, right now, we have 17 students who are receiving between the two schools, um, are, sorry, 10 who are currently enrolled, 17 who we've offered it to. And then we'll continue this into the summer of 2023 for, this is the coming summer, um, for students who are identified, um, as in need for math or for reading. So that is just where, like, just to give you a sense of the system as we have it right now, um, I'm going to turn it over to Caroline, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the emerging data trends and just some samples because again, this is really in its infancy because we had to take so much time in terms of studying, uh, the system itself and really working with the teams. Um, so Caroline's going to share a little bit of, um, some of the, the data that we're starting to pop out, um, from this work and then some of our next steps.
Good evening. Um, so there's this really great visual that I didn't put in there, but that Beth and I found at a conference that talks about how telling a story with data is kind of like building Legos. You first have to collect them, find them, organize them, maybe by shape or by color. Then you have to use the instructions, figure out your way to like starting to build. And then finally, when you have like your house and your people, your ship, you can start to tell the story. So we spent a lot of time with Legos, like a lot, and sorting and losing pieces and finding them and Googling how to make, do certain things in Excel. Um, and so some of the things that, um, we popped out related to, uh, this EWS process. So EWS isn't new. It's ba- it used to be called EWS, uh, early warning systems. And it's based on kind of three areas that we're looking at that are evidence-based to, um, be indicative of potential future dropout. So in our case, like disengagement, we luckily don't have a huge dropout problem, but we certainly can see students become disengaged. So, and they kind of follow ABCs, so it's nice for us to remember. So attendance, um, behavior and then of course, failure. Um, so attendance is seen as, uh, one indicator of student engagement. And so this again, took us a long time to build this Lego house. Um, and for us to really find something that we had seen glimpses of in the past, I, I did this maybe about seven years ago with David Raft. Um, it was not quite as dire, but it wasn't super dissimilar either. So what trends do you notice here? So we have, you know, we kept the same colors, right? Green is on track, yellow is slightly off track or, or slightly at risk, um, and then all the way to red.
12 graders, uh?
Yeah, yeah. There's kind of a, over the course of, um, the year, right? Fall, winter, spring, and over the course of the grades, uh, we see bigger and bigger, um, issues with attendance, right? So we broke it down, um, so green in this case is the student missed fewer than six classes and, and six of one class. Um, and the deep red is 20 or more of one class, um, which was, which is pretty alarming. And so a lot of work has already happened this year, um, with Beth in the middle school and in the high school, um, with deans and the admin teams and the counselors to work on consistent systems and practices around this. Um, one of the things that was done is we, we've been following some of, um, the research that the MyMTSS group has collected around how to, how to address this, how to even talk about this. So we've actually pulled some wording from their attendance letters. Instead of sending a letter that says, you know, your child has missed blah, 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 and you know, it sounds very punitive, it's flipping it and talking about the amount of time that your student has been there and connecting that to, you know, the more that they come, the mo- you know, the better the outcomes and trying to frame it really positively and to grow that number. Um, but we're obviously far away from, from getting this to where it needs to be. Um, so the goal here is to, to use this as our baseline to continue to build those partnerships with families and connect with students and, and help them feel like, you know, school is a place that they want to be and when they're not here, they're missed. Um, not only that, but the missed opportunity for learning. So that in contrast to the academic indicators. So another thing that we did is we looked at that, see that course failure, right? So if you look at that in terms of our course failures, you might notice that, um, no, 12 grade is not there because this was last year's data and those students had graduated. So we couldn't pull that. But I expect if we saw it, would not be that dissimilar. It looks pretty darn good. So for this, we coded it, green is, um, basically only one D, no worse, right? One D and everything else is better. Um, and so we have, we gave one point for a D and two points for every E. And so then you can see kind of our color-coded system on the side. Um, now still, by try three, uh, we had 75 students who had some course flag, um, which is not nothing and it's definitely something we want to work on. But we are seeing this trend of, you know, even the students who are not coming, we're still having grades that are, that are okay. It begs a lot of questions, right? Um, and so one, what is the next slide? Um, so one of the things that, uh, we know is that grades are not necessarily the best indicator of, um, academic skill, right? There's a lot of things involved. There's homework assignments and there's projects and there's, um, all sorts of things that are related to this, what the students are actually learning, but not necessarily a straight indicator. And another thing that, that we spent a lot of time doing, Beth dove into deeply, is looking at some of the areas where we know we have a high degree of course failure and trying to predict that. So we have this massive spreadsheet where we tried to kind of look at, okay, well, of all the students who maybe failed biology as ninth graders, how could we have prevented that? How could we have predicted that so we could address it before in middle school? Um, and we found that of all the piece of data that we had, there wasn't really any one that was perfect. There were a lot that did correlate. Uh, but one thing that's missing at the middle school and at the high school is a tool to really hone in on, um, whether students have the basic literacy and math skills that they need at that level to reach the course content and be successful across the board. So one of the things that we started introducing is, um, AMES Web Plus, which is a curriculum-based measure similar to Acadian's and would kind of bridge that gap beyond, um, fifth grade, um, to get at exactly that question so that we could start to figure out, well, who are the students that really do need that academic intervention versus who are the students that might need something more like homework hive or something related to executive functioning? Or maybe it is a feeling of not belonging or, or not being valued for who they are or something that we can address it in one of the many different ways that we know how to address. Um, so we brought in a trainer, we trained, um, 20 staff members across a variety of disciplines, which was really neat because that gave us a lot of good feedback on how would this apply as a math teacher? How would this apply as a special education teacher? How would this apply as a, a, you know, school psychologist? Um, our tech department was incredibly helpful. And so we're working right now on piloting that with a, a couple of students each, um, and then thinking about how we could use this for screening, um, into the future. And, um, the other tool that we have started to lean into to improve this, uh, data system, um, work is illuminate. So we've done a fair amount of trainings that are broader than we ever have before. And illuminate is really just our data warehouse, right? So it, it kind of, it has the potential to cut a lot of that Lego sorting time instead of doing all that manually, kind of automatizes things because one of the issues with EWS right now is that all the data is ever-changing, but the process for pulling it is static, right? We pull it into a spreadsheet, we do all that, we make these graphs, and then tomorrow we have new attendance data and tomorrow we have new behavior data and tomorrow we have new course data. Um, and so we are, we just collaborated this Monday with a team in Ingham County who's using, basically able to color-code things live. Um, and we're really excited about that possibility and we're growing our tech, um, skills greatly. So some of the goals that we have in the near future for secondary MTSS is, um, academic interventions, which again, first we need to be able to figure out, you know, what the core challenges are. So that is where our data can help, um, to support students during the school day. A lot of what we've been able to put in place in the first year or after school, um, supports, um, work on the attendance. We know that that's an issue. We know that there's an engagement flag there. Um, so working with families and our school-based teams to increase communication and also things like making sure that we use the same absence codes. Like that sounds stupid, but it's really important. Um, and then the reason that you, where there's not a behavior graph to complete our ABCs is that, um, we aren't currently collecting that in a way that is consistent across the board or that's easy to pull out. So that's another thing that we're working on increasing how, not only how we're responding to behavior and, and students not following behavior expectations, but also how we're collecting that in order to, um, better meet the needs of students. Cause that's really the goal. The goal is not to collect it so that we can be more punitive. The goal is to collect it so that we can see what the underlying issues are and address them. Um, so shifting to K5, um, I just I just pulled some of the trends here and then I have all the graphs at the bottom for the nerds in the group who want them for the future. So here are a couple of them. So a couple of good pieces of news from K five literacy. Is that we did see a nice increase in the percent of students at benchmark from winter to winter. In first and third grade was pretty significant. So in first grade, it was seventy-two to seventy-nine percent benchmark. So again, if we want that great triangle shape, we want at least eighty percent of students at benchmark. So that was pretty darn close. That's the first time since the pandemic. In first grade, it stayed flat, but it was at eighty-three percent. So that was pretty darn good. And in second grade, went from seventy-seven to eighty-one percent, which was really nice. Oh, sorry. In second grade, it stayed flat. In third grade, it went up. This is the lowest kindergarten overall data that we have incoming. So I think we had seventy-one percent of our students at benchmark. It's the first time that that has happened by far in the whole history of when we've done this. So that data is lagging a little bit behind. But we've also had a nice increase from fall to winter in scores. One thing that is evident is that the work that's being done in foundational skills, K three. In tier one and in making sure that we are absolutely up to date on the latest science on how literacy develops. Is leading to improvements, but there is a continued need. So if you look at, for example, in the graphs, you know, if you want to spend your free time on that. If you look at the last three falls for the percent at benchmark, the measure for phoneme segmentation fluency. That measures students' ability to hear and and segment sounds and words. We went from fifty-seven percent benchmark to sixty-one to seventy-one percent, which again, like is this really nice steady increase in second grade. Another indicator is correct letter sound. So that's a phonics measure, looking at letter sound correspondence and automaticity with that. Fifty-eight to sixty to seventy-one percent at benchmark. So again, it's it's working. We're kind of working on improving that. But there's still, there's still some ways to go. And W A, as I presented last time, is a little different because it's not measuring things as directly as some of our other assessments. So that one does continue to show that, you know, our students are performing high, but also continuing to show the impact. Of the pandemic in and outside of school learning. And the other thing that we're seeing continuing is that disproportionality in assessment outcomes for students. With minoritized and marginalized identities. And that's something that is tilt. As a teaching and learning team, I'm really excited to dive into even deeper next year. Continue to and hopefully start to change those trends. In math, we saw a nice increase in the percentage of students at benchmark. Again, similarly. Kindergarten, the composite stayed roughly flat. So the overall. Measure of risk with math development. But we did see some really big improvements from last year. So last year from fall to winter, we had kind of a dip. And this year, things staying flat is actually really positive. In pretty much all areas, we saw the fall to winter go way up from last year. And this is the first year that we collected winter data across the board. So that'll be really exciting to see what the fall. Or what the when what the spring data collection looks like too, since we don't really have a mid-year comparator. The the three areas that continue to come out as a neat focus areas in early math. Are automaticity with key math concepts. We've talked already about strategic counting and subitizing and quantity comparison. And the way that we do that is incorporate more manipulatives and be really strategic in how we do that. So that students can develop that number sense and then build fluency with math facts. Which then carries them through all the higher level math that they'll encounter. Or at least gives them the right foundation. It's not sufficient, obviously. The one interesting thing in N W A is that the percent of students scoring at least average on N W A math. Had been consistently lower than reading across all grades and that has now flipped. So it's now higher for fourth, fifth and eighth grade, which is kind of cool. And again, there continues to be disproportionality in our outcomes, which is something that we will not stop addressing until we fix it. Some of the academic supports from this year in K five. We had two hundred ninety-five students receive evidence-based reading interventions. And eighty-seven of those kind of graduated, right? Had some support in the first part of the year and no longer needed by spring. There's others that came in partway through the year. So it doesn't mean that it left, you know, two hundred and a couple of kids. We had some K three students who received math intervention also. We did that through our I team process. And then as Karen mentioned, we did offer Great Lakes Tutoring and Homework Hive for secondary students. For the summer of twenty twenty-three, we've already sent a hundred and fifty invitations to our Super Summer Scholars Program. That's going to focus on literacy and math like it has last couple of years for six weeks, two days a week. Explorer and Hornet Camp and E L camps are going to continue to run. And then we will continue to offer Great Lakes Tutoring and we are likely going to offer Lexia licenses as well that we're able to do through some of the grants that we received. So now I think it's time for Ben to cue the video of us receiving the awards. Ah, it didn't work. Dang it. Sorry. Next time YouTube it.
You're number one in our books.
I still quit. Those are, you don't have to go through those. That's so for those of you who want it or obviously if there's any questions, we can pull all of the graphs that I've updated. And I will, in this presentation, update everything with our spring data.
Yes, and it's also publicly available via our school accountability tab on the district website for those who'd like to view it as well. All right. Thank you.
I I had a question earlier and I actually talked to you about it and I believe you addressed it this evening.
Is it why I brought the cock pot?
Are there any questions from the board? Oh, a few. Yeah, we'll start with trustee Eastep and then go on to vice president Stedman.
You are doing a lot of work. And good work.
Thank you.
So I had a question about like the Homework Hive. And you had mentioned that twenty-seven middle schoolers. Received an invitation and sixteen accepted and for the high school is forty sent out and thirteen accepted. Do you like try to fill some of those spots if, I guess, talking to counselors or just as things come up? I know in the past with the middle school, when you all had brought up like the academic class. I'm like, oh, that's great. Like I wish every middle schooler like had an option for that, right? But I don't know if that's something, like do you assess like after that, if there's more invitations you could send out?
Yeah, and I I was. I was remiss not to also said, so when we looked at our system in terms of the intentional programming. So we have, you know, across the last couple of years, especially during COVID and working with Principal Steger. Principal Washington at the time, then now Chuck Watson, Getner. In terms of embedding programming during the school day to meet student needs. So there's additional programs like academic success classes or supports that are available internally that were already there. So while my screen here says one thing, this does not. In terms of Homework Hive and Great Lakes, they are in addition to what we had previously offered. So we had never offered Great Lakes Tutoring before the pandemic. We do have available funds right now because of the COVID relief funds. That we were able to access for this and it so this is temporary. So there's the study of like, how do we use what we're trying on to meet student needs? More sustainably, even beyond when the additional funding is available and create systems that will last to support students. Is a part of also identifying the who and the when, because some students are available after school. Some students are not available. We have to have things that are during the school day. We happen to have a few of those in place. And how do we get that system to all speak to each other so that it's working cohesively to meet student needs? And then as far as monitoring student needs, a pre-existing prior to Beth joining M T S S role. Process that was in place is we have student success teams. The the principals run alongside of their building teams to look at student needs. And are looking at some of the flags that we consider. So within that E WIMS lane. And now we're coalescing in terms of looking at the consistencies across buildings and then revisiting those regularly. I know Beth will probably want to add more. I was trying to save her as much voice as possible.
Yeah, I don't know how much I'm going to be able to get out, but yes, the answer is yes. We look at it at least once or twice a month. We just looked at both buildings this this week and we've had sent out five or six new invitations just this week. And so we just keep cycling through. Sometimes kids' schedules change, especially at the high school. Or maybe it's their sports schedule that changed or maybe it's their academic classes that changed. So then we're, how many spots do we have? How many teachers do we have? And how many can we move and up? So, yeah.
Thank you. That's fantastic that we offer that and hopefully somehow can fund it in the future when those grants run out.
I was wondering, so the data that you mentioned about kindergarten, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. That is before they become salinity area school students, they are starting sort of.
Thank you.
At a disadvantage compared to kindergartners of yore.
Yeah, and and I I'm working really hard to try to change how I say this. Yes, they're starting at disadvantage. I understand that operating a deficit model is not ideal. But I think that the reality is here, what we know is that having. Certain scores here is just correlated with potentially lower outcomes, right? So this, so it's. I broke it. So what this is showing and this is the measures that go into this are correct letter names. So just not because we expect students to know their whole alphabet, but because we know that that's just a something that's highly correlated with learning to read. That if students come in knowing some letter names and they're and they can say them fairly quickly, that they're less at risk. And then the other one is first sound fluency. So if they can hear the first sound in a word, that's also a good indicator. And when we look at that is again, how how easily it comes to them, right? So, you know, back in fifteen sixteen, we had seventy-nine percent of students who were not at risk with those measures. And, you know, seventy-seven, this is kind of where we lived for a really long time. Last year, we had seventy-six and this year we had seventy-one percent. So yes, this is, this is like, we assess them in week three of school. So it's nothing having to do with what we've taught. I don't think it's a reflection of anything bad that anyone's doing, just that this is the reality.
I guess that's what I was wondering about, like, just somebody who thinks about little kids and early child development a lot. Like, do we have, and this is a little out of the weeds of this, but do we have any data on like? Are there lower preschool enrollment rates? Is this technology related? I have my own theories. Is there data? And I know that's not exactly part of the presentation, but if there is data, it'd be something we could highlight for the community of. Rising students coming in like, hey, we're seeing this. These are things that seem to have data that they may help.
Yeah, I I I have my own theories too, Dr. Gold, and I I don't, I don't know. I think what's hard is this really does seem like a pandemic. Thing. And therefore, you know, like Dr. Latch and I have put on workshops for area preschools where we talked about the importance of certain things. And, you know, games and things that you can do. I would never want to give parents homework or, you know, say like, oh, before your kid comes to school, they should know this. I had a toddler. I I had a toddler in the pandemic and two other kids. And, you know, my husband and I had jobs where we were on Zooms and sometimes we had four Zooms going at the same time. And and so, you know, I imagine that a lot of our current five-year-olds were the kids in houses where these things happened. So I I would love to explore any ideas that anyone has on kind of messaging that. But I also don't want to add insult to injury of families that already went through the trauma of the pandemic. I think it's more like, hey, now that we know this, we can, we can align resources and and be thoughtful about how we support them now that they're here. Does that make sense?
No, I agree completely. I think it will be interesting to see this data moving forward over the next couple of years. I wondered about the E WIMS. Does it only set up to sort of identify? Sort of the 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 end of the iceberg of the kids who are really struggling the hardest. And does it, can it, can it assess delta? So in other words, can it assess the child that goes from A's to C's? And then if I wondered if you could speak just a little bit more about what happens once a child is identified? Cause of course, with like my pediatrician brain, I'm like, well, was there a divorce at home or was the child sick? Like, I'm assuming once a child is identified in any sense. That then we're talking to the school counselor and the teacher and the family, et cetera. But just, just for my edification, like once their flag. A, I guess, two-part question. A, are the flags only sort of once they're already really in a failing status? And I'm using the term failing. It's not the best term, but you know, the data that you use. Yes, disengaged. Or does it start picking up on warning signs or delta change in performance, which is, you know, a lot of times what I'm screening for? In terms of S C L. And then B, once a student is identified at risk or disengaged. What beyond the tutoring, which is all wonderful, but you know, how do we look at the bigger picture? I'm sure there's a process that's happening and I want to credit our educators and staff for it. So if you could tell us about it, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll I'll take a crack at it. And I'm not smiling because I think that student disengagement is funny, but rather because you're asking some really pointed questions. And I think we're on our way. We're not, the process is not done yet. So Beth, just correct me. I'm going to use my voice because you can't use yours for now, but hopefully I'll do it right. So the premise with E WIMS is that you do want to try, you know, much like the work that we've done at K five. We want to try to catch the potential for disengagement when it's small, right? It has for long view to prevent school failure and and long-term issues. But the point is not to flag students only when, you know, they've already lost credits and are not on track to graduate, for instance. It can actually be used at any level of the system, including in the younger grades. It just so happens in the younger grades, we tend to have a tighter pulse. Because when we have one teacher, we have more data and fewer things, right? So it's not like, well, did you fail your chemistry class? It's like, do you know how to read? So it's a little easier to kind of get a handle on that. So and that's where I I spoke a little bit about illuminate and the potential. The I, the current mode is that, yes, as students start to come up, for instance, on like the attendance list. There's conversation around, oh, this student's attendance was great all year and man, look at now they've just failed or they just, you know, stopped attending this class. Or they, you know, they failed their first class as a twelfth grader. Like this is strange. So there is already conversation around that. But the challenge is that when that requires you to pull and transform data every time. There's a lot of just, again, time spent sorting Legos when you should be working on the story of what's happening with the student. So the potential with something that's live like illuminate is that that's a tool that can grab data from Power School simultaneously. As it grabs data from other systems. And then you can tell it to basically color-code things so that the the whole system operates on kind of these flags. Okay, so you have like a little flag that's maybe yellow for maybe the student has one E. And then, you know, the bigger flag might be red and it's like, ooh, now we failed a class. But ideally, we want to start seeing when there's just a couple of flags. Or maybe there's like one behavior incident and there's, you know, there's attendance issues that are maybe like the five percent of school missed. And that's when we want to start having the conversations. I can't say that we currently have a system that does that beautifully, but the goal would be to be able to see that in real time. So that we can spend our focus and our time organizing the resources to, you know, address that. Now, I think one thing that, you know, is also challenging is just the the schedule and the system. So as we're working on streamlining the data so that we can create that early warning system itself. We're also, Beth is also working to think and and plan for how can we set up the intervention? So that regardless of what we find, we have something immediate to support the student that doesn't require out of school. Cause as, you know, that was kind of the the thing that was easier to address. Now it doesn't involve changing schedules. It doesn't involve, you know, assigning teachers to teach different things. But that's where we also needed the academic component to come back in. Cause as I, as I've shown many times, and W A does a great job of giving us kind of broad, you know, oh, well, these students are are struggling. It doesn't do a great job of telling us, well, these students are specifically struggling when we get to five syllable words. And, you know, we need to do some morphological analysis because not only are we not decoding them accurately, we're making a lot of errors. So we're losing meaning, but we also can't use the word parts to derive what that word is, right? We don't, we're we're far from understanding that renal has to do with the kidneys and therefore anything that has that, you know, can. We don't, we're, we're far from understanding that renal has to do with the kidneys and therefore anything that has that, you know, can, can be, you know, made, made meaningful. There was a lot of your question, I don't know if you.
Yeah, and I would just, I would add another piece, yeah, to complement that is, we know, we often stand up here and we're talking about data points. The, the, the humanized side of this is that the student success meetings that are happening behind the scenes with the building teams talking about kids. I mean, we've got adults who are in the hallways monitoring student behavior, noticing patterns. And then that coupled with the information that you're getting from the system, bringing the counselors into a room and you're having those weekly meetings or bi-monthly meetings, whatever that might be, is, is incredibly supportive. And the more we strengthen that system and get it all working together, the more likely we are going to be able to see that delta.
This is really very useful, thank you so much for your work on this.
So to move down the table, we have Vice President Stedman.
So first of all, thank you for including more secondary information in this presentation, I appreciate it and I remember us discussing that last time. I would still like to see more secondary data and discussion around math. I noticed that in the deck that the, the board was provided, there were a couple of slides hidden, so I don't want to get into the data on those. So perhaps you were still kind of looking to see if those were the correct numbers. But there's quite a difference between, one of the slides that's hidden and slide fifty-two, which is eighth grade NWA math at or above average. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about math in general in the secondary and include more in the presentation next time? And discuss if there's a possible disparity between the grading system that's maybe used at the high school versus the middle school? And/or rigor, which are some comments that I hear sometimes, specifically around math.
Absolutely. Had that, the, when we do present in September with our, and some of the board members are new for this particular presentation, we're here in September. When we have the full-scale package of data from our state assessments as well. It's a nice comparison point to have all of that data together alongside of course grades, which we know aren't as reliable. And then the NWA's results from the full year, which, again, we don't have the end-of-year data at this point in time. And we're currently in testing season right now, and that information is released in August. And so we put together that package for September.
And I'm sorry, it's slide fifty-two, so it's the one right before this, that I was looking at the disparity between high school and middle school.
I was trying to find it.
Yep, there we go.
There you go. Oh, no. This one, right?
Yeah, it, it's just that there's, there's a good difference
Absolutely.
Between ninth and twelfth grade in this.
Between ninth and twelfth grade.
Yeah. So I, I was wondering if, if you could comment generally, is, is it hard to differentiate between, when, when speaking about math specifically? Is, is it hard because they have a different kind of, like, standards-based grading versus regular grades or traditional grades? Is, is that something where it's harder to measure for this? Or is it a different test that you're taking the data from, or, are we not comparing apples to apples?
We're not comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I, so you're talking about slide fifty-five, which is the math course grades, right? Versus slide, the slide, which is the NWA. So, so it, it is an apples-to-apples, and that's what's tricky. So NWA, this, these one, all the ones that are purple, blue and red are NWA. So that, we have a consistent measure of fourth through eighth grade, right?
And then you have to have something else for the high school.
And we don't have anything that measures this as directly for the high school, which is one of the reasons that we're bringing Ames Web in. The, what we do have are grades, which, yes, we will have better data in the future. No, we don't have it right now, because yes, there is, there are differences in how those are collected. It's also not apples-to-apples when you look at all, all math classes, obviously. And this slide will, the slide fifty-five will also be updated at the end of the year. It's just that we didn't have the try-to, you know, data finished by the time we were putting this together.
No, appreciate it, and yeah, if we could dive in a little bit more on, on secondary math, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Secretary Miller.
Thank you for this presentation, I always learn so much from, from each of you, so thank you for that. And thank you for always being available to answer our follow-up questions too, and I might have a few after tonight. So, first, I just want to recognize the partnership with Great Lakes. And they've been a wonderful contributor to our schools for a number of years. And I'm really pleased to see their partnership. And I know from my own home to lots of homes in our community, they've had a positive impact on students and their success in school and beyond when they leave Selene area schools too. So, so I just want to recognize and appreciate that. One other thing that you had mentioned with kindergarten specifically, I'm in a training right now with MDE. So one of the resources that I've just become familiar with is through Detroit Public Television. And it's called Read, Write, Roar. And so I just want to say that for parents who might be listening right now, Read, Write, Roar might be a really great and engaging way to support your students over the summer, whether they're getting ready for kindergarten, if they're in preschool, or if they're already in kindergarten and beyond. It was a program that was developed in partnership during the pandemic to support students who didn't have other educational opportunities. And it is scientific, research-based, and has been supporting a lot of, a lot of children in Michigan. So if you, it's free, it's a part of Detroit Public Television, you can find it online. There are grade-specific lessons, but you can also hop around and enjoy different things there. I just, one of the questions that is coming up in my mind, and this might be a question that you answer in the future. So if you want to defer it to the future, that's fine too. But one of the things that's coming up in my mind is we have the Niels of Selene. And then we have students who are falling into those ABC patterns. And then we have students in between who are working their butts off and, and maybe struggling to find a way to highlight their genius. And I, I do want to give a shout-out to Mr. Volarath, because I do know that even in his AP class, I know from personal experience that if testing isn't your thing, if writing it down isn't your thing, he allows for other opportunities for students to highlight their genius. They can speak it, they can revise it, they can learn. And I think that that really allows students to not just have one sample that is either a, a soaring or not, but instead allows them to continually to grow over, over the year. And I know he's not alone, that there are other teachers who do that. But when I'm thinking about that example in particular, it doesn't seem to be consistent in, in every class. And so I'm wondering, in the future, if it's the student success team, or if it's other professional development that can support our secondary teachers. When, when you teach elementary school, you kind of have to differentiate, because you, you might have, you know, twenty-five eight-year-olds in your class, but they might, you know, run, run the, the graph of, of experiences prior to getting to your classroom. And then in high school, they start to kind of like, take different classes based on interest or based on academic ability. But it doesn't always seem to be consistent across the board with how teachers are supporting students or implementing 504s or et cetera, et cetera. So I'm wondering if there are future plans for those kids who are in the middle, working and grinding, and, and might need a little bit more support than, than just work completion?
I think like the best place where that answer lies is in our curriculum review, as we're studying our instructional practices and our tight and loose expectations. And starting with the math and science, they had some, the teams that came for that, which were actually celebrating the end of year one, this upcoming week. In terms of just rich conversations around how are we meeting diverse student needs alongside of our understanding of cultural response, instruction and how the brain works. And we're actually having a book study on that right now with teachers who have volunteered to participate in that. And that's intersecting with our, our work in curriculum review. And, and of course, as a part of the curriculum review, not just instructional practices, but also assessment practices as well. So it's not unfamiliar, I think it's more of a matter of like, what are we coming to an agreement on as a department and grade level? And that work is in progress. And I've been, yeah, really happy with discussions and learning so much from the experts inside of the classroom as we continue as a district to think about, what is the work that we're asking that's authentic, meaningful, complex in our district alongside of state assessments and the expectations that come alongside of that? You know, and where do those two things lie together and serve our students the best?
I do, I do firmly and one hundred percent believe that every teacher that's getting up every morning and coming to school has the best in mind for their kids. And I know, like, when we've been talking about the opt-out policy, we've been thinking about how the teaching and learning team can help support teachers, because it can be overwhelming. And so I'm just thinking about, with that in mind, how can we support teachers with the diverse needs of students that they're encountering? And, and understanding that different modes of demonstrating their intelligence is, is also, you know, maybe unique to the way high school has been done before, but really important as we move forward. Thank you.
I appreciate you bringing that up too, because I think a lot of times in, in these presentations, you know, we, we report on the data that we have to. We report on the data because that is one indicator. But my work and Beth's work now is really about systems-level operation and organizing things so that we don't, teachers don't have roadblocks that could be avoided to making sure that they have what they need to teach. It doesn't mean that we are responsible for all the tier-one components that also happen simultaneously that are hugely important, so that we, they have the tools that they need to differentiate. Nor does it mean that, you know, oh, well, once we get to like ninety percent, we're like, check that box and moving to Hawaii. Like, that's not, that's not how this works. There's, obviously, it's not that we only care about the, the Niels, because, you know, they make us look really good, even though they make us feel inadequate. And like, the, you know, really, the students who are falling off track are flagged for risk, obviously. This is just that, you know, if we can achieve this, if we can get all students at least this proficient, that will say something good about our work. It doesn't mean that we're done, or that in the meantime, we're ignoring everybody in that middle who's, who's grinding.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah, thank you for your support and for continuing to develop these systems too. I think that, you know, I think in education, we always have room for improvement and we can see that, so thank you.
Treasurer Gerby.
All right. One, so first of all, I'll say something for the public, you mentioned something that caught my ear, section ninety-eight B. So, section ninety-eight B from the finance department means that we have to establish goals as a school district in order to be eligible for state funding. And so, so from, it's like, there's a, something in the public acts and all of that. So if you're wondering what ninety-eight B is, if you're watching this at home, there you go. So, a couple of my thoughts, or a couple, I have a couple of questions, a couple of thoughts. Number one, I guess I would give this thought first. I'm not surprised to see increases when students are spending time in our classrooms, right? Like, that to me has been essential, it's been something that we've been incredibly focused on, you know, doing, coming out of a pandemic, of course, and all of that. So, I want to make sure I say that, and I guess I would say, take this as my moment to applaud the educators who do get up every day and do the best job they can in our classrooms. So, with regards to this eWIM system, can you speak a little bit? And if, if Ms. Russo would like to just like send me an email on this one, it's fine, or if Ms. Steger wants to speak to it. And I know I'm putting you on spot, so sorry. About, yeah. I'm, I'm wondering about the parental feedback piece. I am wondering how and where and how often do we engage families and parents? And this is the data we're receiving, these are the at-risk, I, I call them at-risk targets or at-risk things that we see. And how often do we bring them into those meetings and those conversations?
On the, like, on the, on the school level or within?
Yeah, because I know it sounded like we have our own team and we take this data and then we do these interventions. How often do we inform and talk to parents about it?
So, speaking from the high school level, I will say that this is a very new process, because Beth was just put into this role starting in September, well, August, July. We did work, Caroline mentioned earlier, that, you know, she'd worked with David and I back in the day, but her bandwidth to do K-12 was not there.
Yeah.
Which is totally understandable. So, we, we haven't had the ability to really get to this point until now.
Okay.
So this is where those conversations may start, and it'll be talking to Beth and Caroline and Kara about where that fits in and how it fits in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't want to again mislead in saying like, there is a system out there, it doesn't mean that it's here established. When we say "we," it's just a nice way of saying like Beth.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Or Beth and I, or Beth and I late at night in a hotel room at a conference trying to get this done. But I, so currently though, the students. Yeah. Yeah, so, so currently, we do, when a student is flagged, which again, right now, it's really the, the course failure flags and the attendance flags.
Right.
Parents are brought into conversation, there are notifications, there's letters, as we said, we're working on that communication being more positively worded. And there are student success meetings with the counselors, with the central office at the middle school and the high school to reach out to parents. But there is not currently a really nice system that ensures that all this data is, you know, easily collected, analyzed, and then that we're addressing it, you know, efficiently throughout the system, that everyone, like, that's, we're not there yet.
Well, I, I anticipate with the high-quality people we have, that that will do something happen.
We're gonna hear a Neil, he's gonna help us.
Thank you for humoring that, by the way, like, I know you're really on spot there.
And I know Beth is back there, and she's like, wait, I want to say this, and she can't. And there, like, some, some of the initial, some of the initial feedback that I know that they're even getting from like the notification letters regarding the attendance letters that they've reframed and sent home, the parent interaction on that has been more positive and, you know, informative. So she can expound on that via email.
Well, right, and, and I will say, my, my niche is secondary, and the reality for me is I like the idea of early warnings, right? Of us being able to say, you know, like, you know, Dr. Gold talked about, like, things where we see trends that are going the wrong direction, or things where we see just warning flags. A kid hasn't been a frequent absent student and now pops six in a row in a, or six in a three-week span. So anyway, so I want you to know how much I appreciate the time and the effort and the data collecting and all of the communication pieces and the team building that is required. But I do think this is worth it, from a standpoint of identifying those students early and getting as much of support as we can to those students, really does, you know, does allow us to make sure that, you're right, we don't have a, a big dropout rate. I don't want anybody to drop out. So, so anyway, so I, I want to applaud that, okay, and thank you for that work. The second thing that caught my ear, and I, I don't know if you're gonna have a magic wand, because I certainly don't on this, is, okay, this, you talked about spring attendance, right? And at the high school level, I, I know it, I'm experiencing it right now. It's, it's sports, it's field trips, it's, you know, and these are all incredible engagements, and they're all really good things for kids and why have you? But if a kid is leaving at one fifteen for a track meet, then that kid is missing those educational opportunities in the classroom, right? So I guess my question is this, have we done any data accumulation of how that really is impacting student data and student performance? Because in my opinion, like, we have to have some way to like balance those two things, right? Like, the, being in the classroom is best, as we've established with our K-5 advancements and all of that. But I want those students to have those opportunities as well. So I guess, can you tell me, like, have we talked about that, have we tried to do any data?
So as a part of the cycle, so going back to where we are now, um, sorry. I want you to know on Monday, there were sixty-eight slides, and so we thought it was necessary to make sure that we were staying somewhat focused, because there's just so much information.
I know.
You know, in terms of what we could share. So if you look at where it says monitoring and adjusting back in quarter four, and then analyzing data in quarter one, so that would be January through March, right? So we set up regular, we meet regularly with the building teams, although they're considered the building continuous improvement teams. This is part of the new MyKit process, and we share this data and talk about it. So there was a meeting in this particular example where Beth shared this data with the high school and the middle school teams. And we talked about, what do we need to know, what questions should we be asking about this in order to strengthen our system so that our students are engaged in the classroom? And sports came up, you know, in the spring, like, how much of this is sports? How, do we account for the fact that seniors leave early? Like, she, like, Beth had accounted for that, like, there's some just little asterisks on that. State testing, for example, we, we missed time, right? So there's, there's a lot of impacts on attendance at the secondary level. So once we filtered those things out and then said, okay, what else do we need to be asking? And why might this be the case? And then what do we need to do about it? And because now we can see it, because again, the graph is wonderful, and that took out, like, a tremendous amount of time. I won't be overly dramatic about it, but, so statistically, to get all that together in the same place, to be able to ask those questions was one of our goals for this year. Because we can't fix what we can't study. And so that is, that was the hope in that. And then those conversations in the system, so as we, we start, we're looking at our data right now. And then we have meetings set up the week of March eighth, oh, sorry, May eighth, with all of the leadership teams in the buildings to look at our goals that we had set for this year and ask ourselves, is the data playing out that this is where our focus should be? Do we need to make any adjustments? Do we need to make any adjustments? If so, what should those adjustments be? What data do we have to back that up? And then what do we need in terms of professional learning and supports for teachers in order to bring this to implementation moving into the next year? And it's been really interesting, uh, because it's our first year with this particular set of goals, which were developed coming straight out of the pandemic. And we've learned some things throughout the year, so.
The the other data dig that we did here is that we started, so again, what we have in the graphs, we have last year's attendance and last year's course failure, because we wanted to look at an entire year and how it how it appeared. We don't have, um, the seniors. Right? So, um, so what we did is though, in this year, for try one, we looked at attendance versus course failure. So how, what was the impact of one on the other? And, um, and I don't have that graph to pull up and I, it was a while ago, so I don't remember the exact numbers. But there there was obviously, the Venn diagram had overlapped, but it wasn't complete. So it wasn't exactly what you'd expect. Like, some students were absent a lot, but still managed to get, you know, caught up in some way. Um, so I think one thing that's going to be very interesting is now that we go through a spring, especially with the seniors, to then look at our academic indicators and our course failure and see, well, okay, of the students who were in the deep red there, how many of those still managed to pass their classes? What were the protective factors? How did they do it? Was it because of certain attendance issue, right? Was it because their attendance was more due to things that they chose versus, you know, something that happened to them or because they weren't choosing to skip, but they were choosing to go to the track meet? All of those things. So we we are, we have a lot of questions to ask the data and feel free to add them.
Well, and and I hear you. And and quite frankly, these are conversations that, you know, they're they're really appropriate in your staff meeting. And in your about how are these things impacting student achievement and how are they impacting? We have teachers who are tremendous educators, but they're also coaching track. They're also doing these things, right? And so they're good at it, but now they're on a track. You know, so anyway, long story short, I I just, it's something that I, as a high school teacher, it it it's personal for me a little bit too, I'll be bluntly honest.
And I do want to amplify that while we're doing this, we are responding to the students who are currently in seats in front of us. While also looking at what do we need to do to improve for the future, to be proactive, as we get that preact, proactive and reactive piece. We we're responsive to the here and now. And so it's that like, right here, again, in the aftermath of the, through three years of a pandemic and then, um, you know, some of the things that we're noticing, meaning a lot about social emotional wellness in students, while also thinking like, how can we strengthen our system so that there's less of a burden on the adults and we can be more efficient and get get ahead of it a little bit.
Well, and I thank you for for bearing with questions. I have one more, because teaching and learning to me is the is the crux of what we're doing, right? And, uh, I will tell you, I'm still obsessed because in twenty twenty, we had kindergartners and first graders. And you might want to answer this question more in the fall, but are we on, how are they doing? How are they like, how is the current third graders who are the most impacted by, you know, um, Zoom and by, you know, learn, like, do you, is is it your professional opinion that we still need to do more to support them going forward as fourth graders? Or can we say, hey, no, they they caught up? I I know I'm using maybe the terms you wouldn't want to, but I'd like your thoughts on that.
And can I just have a point of clarification? Are are you saying that that is the class that was the most affect affected?
No, 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 I'm saying that when I think about.
Because I hadn't heard that before. I just want to make sure like.
That's not what I, okay, let me, let me be clear.
Okay.
As far as like formation of like reading principles and some of that kind of stuff, I think about like kindergartners is where like the foundation of literacy is, it's a K-12 thing. I want to make sure I'm being clear about that. But I do think a lot about those kindergartners, first graders, second graders, who as they were forming those foundational reading skills, may have been doing so with four household, away with four people in a household on on a Zoom. That, I guess that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, and I think I understand your question. I think that we can all agree that, um, the the trauma and the impact of the pandemic is not something that any of us can say was bigger in one group than another.
Yeah, I I swear I'm not trying to say that at all.
I think I understand what you're saying, which is that, you know, the reality is these third graders were potentially virtual or not in school at some of the times when they were building the base of their foundation. Um, and so I I do think, you know, we've shifted a little bit. I think in the first parts of the pandemic, my thinking was like, how do we get them caught up? Like, how do we go back to normal? How do we get back to pre-pandemic levels? And the more I read and the more I look at what's happening, I think, I think that maybe that was pretty naive of me to think that we could get there. And that, yes, maybe our scores are are trending in that direction. They are, right? Like, if you look at, there's like a nice little stair step there in the last couple of years. I don't think that this measures everything that, um, we needed to. And I think we will all be forever changed. And if you walk through the halls and if you, and if you look at the students, um, there's a whole lot that's not reflected here. And there's a whole lot with regards to just, you know, social emotional development and coping skills and things on the, on the plus and on the, and on the negative, right? Things that they gained because of the adversity they faced and things that they didn't get to experience because of what they lost. And so I I don't, I I wish that I had a nice little answer to wrap up in a bow for you. I think it's, I think it's, some things are gaining back, yes. We're having to do things differently, absolutely. And I think that, um, you know, it's it's amazing to see their resilience, but there's definitely still effects of of the trauma and and of the whole experience.
About that, right? Like, K-12, that was hard on every student in our schools, right? Every single one. It's just, I do think a lot about those formative reading kids who are now third graders. Anyway, so.
Trustee Austin.
Yeah, I I don't have much because of all the other questions that are already asked. And but I do, a few things. Uh, one is the amount of time it took you guys to put all this information together. I really appreciate it because there's a lot of information here. I like the Hornet or Homework Hive and the Great Lakes, how we're doing that. And that's from a finance, uh, point. That's what the S R money was intended for, is to utilize those kind of things. And so going forward, as that stuff starts to taper off, how do we, you know, look at the budget to kind of maintain some of that? Because obviously, we're going to still need some of that. And, um, I think so that's a, something for the finance committee is going to have to look at. Because I think that's important and that's what that money was intended for. The other thing was the, I wrote it down here. Can't see anything without my glasses anymore. Illuminate Education. So clarify, that would then allow all that information to work together. She don't have to do all the Lego building? Is that what that's kind of doing? And that's a paid service? Is that correct?
Kind of.
Okay, so it's not completely doing?
Yeah, so it's not going to, it's not going to build your Lego halls for you.
Okay.
Um, but it's, it's, I realize I dropped illuminate, like you dropped like the word metaverse and you're like, yeah, you know what that means, right? We're good. Um, so it it will, yeah, right. Um, I think that what what it's going to do is it's going to take a lot of transformation out. It also requires some work to set it up correctly. And and also it requires basically things to be really neat, right? So like attendance codes to be consistent and it requires, um, metrics to be set up the same across the district. And and it's, and it's awesome. What we, the example we saw in Ingham, took them about three years to set up. They were also working with multiple districts. Um, but it would allow us to no longer have to do the transformation to get to the point where we can like look at a report and see, oh, bleep, this is a yellow flag, this is a red flag, and like see them in real time. So that a school team, you know, once they're trained in how to access it and and analyze it, could see that a lot quicker and then get through the harder work of like building house and and telling the story, which gets us to how do you connect them to the answer, the support, the the help? So yes and no. And Steve knows illuminate is like, it's a, it's a night, it has potential. It's also, uh, it's, it's not like, it's not like an iPhone. It's like a. It's not chat G P. It's not as straightforward, but it has a lot of potential. And it is something we already purchased. We use it for a lot of other things and and assessment by high school and tracking, you know, who's brought to intervention team over the years, tracking our, like, we've been, we've been putting into the system. It's just now there's a lot more potential that we can harness on that.
Yeah, because like Brad said, you know, finding this stuff out early is important, you know? And and if you guys got to build all this information, like all this, all the time, I mean, holy cow, we're going to be behind the eight ball before we know it. So, um, so if we can get a software or something that can kind of help with that, and I do like how it does make, you know, if you have to label everything the same way, that's kind of nice anyways. So, um, I guess I do have one ask and with all that information you put in there, I I hate to ask it, but is there a way, uh, next time, maybe we can add some more, you know, we go back to like twenty, you know, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then twenty-two, twenty-three? Can we put some of the years prior to twenty twenty-one? Because that was kind of when the COVID stuff happened. So, um, I see, and this one you have it, but maybe it was the N W E A, uh, stuff. You you start there at twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, yeah. Can we put more in there just so?
I tried.
You tried.
N W A won't let us.
Oh, they won't.
I know. I was on the phone with them for so long and believe it or not, they won't do it. Um, I had to make this graph because they don't have a graph that looks like this. But the data that you need to pull out of the system, they actually only give for the year prior and the current year. It just so happens that I had already done this for twenty twenty-one, so I had it. So basically, like, from now on, in, yeah, in five years, I'll have like eight years of data. But I I got elevated to like all the customer support levels and they were like, no, that's just not something we offer.
Yeah, because the, we know twenty twenty-one was.
Yeah.
Right after the pandemic. That doesn't, we don't want that to be our benchmark.
I know. It's super frustrating that they don't.
Yeah, so we want to pull data so we can say, okay, prior to COVID, this is where we're at. That's the, that's our benchmark.
No, I I I don't mean to make a joke of it, but it's, it's very frustrating for us too that we can't pull that. Well, we, we can pull, um, individual student data, but a lot of our students have left. So, you know, it doesn't, the students that remain don't represent that. Plus, we then have to go through and calculate that for every single part, every single time of year, every single grade. Um, and even then, it would be incomplete. So I I wish and I promise that we tried a lot.
So you, yeah, I mean, and just to kind of wrap this up, like, so you can appreciate where we started with systems. Like, the number of times that I've sat in a room with Caroline and said, th- this has to be easier. Like, we can't work this hard to serve students well. And in today's day and age, where, why is it this difficult? And so when we talk about the systems work that we're doing, again, there isn't a ma, like, we have not yet found that magic wand, but this team is working so hard to create systems and collaborate with, um, nearby districts and districts within the county, districts outside of the county, in order for us to tackle this, as well as incredible amounts of professional development and work with M T, the M T S S, um, system in general, you know, just to make this work so that we can, um, systemically have something in place to address the needs of our students at more push button than we currently have.
And and we're getting there and we're learning, you know, again, I appreciate that you said that, Kara, because we're collaborating with folks across the state. We we've started a Wash non-TSS collaborative, so we have a lot of, so we're all kind of working together to try to work smart and not harder. A lot of districts are struggling with these kind of barriers and it's, it's tricky.
Well, thank you. I asked, um, did you have something to add at this? Yep, great.
Uh, I used illuminate this afternoon. It went pretty well. So I was just checking it test grade, but I mean, other than that, I did use it today. It's kind of timely. I admit, most of the graphs are a little above my pay grade, but, you know, it looks great from my end, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I want to ask, I'd like to thank Kara and Caroline and Beth for your wonderful presentation. I hope I didn't just pick at a scab that no one looked at. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
We have several action items this evening, uh, so digging in, and I know we're going to dig into, flip open our laptops and take a look at some of these things. But I'd like to recommend, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three closed session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation, section eight eight of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved, Steben.
Steben.
Support Gerby.
Thank you. So for those of you new to this process, uh, Secretary Miller will hand a numbered, almost numbered copy to us to review. And we'll do a quick look. Where? Oh, yeah, Braid. That's your, that's your, um, baptismal name, right? That's okay. Gerby. Oh, wow, I got both of them. So as soon as Secretary Miller has taken her chair again, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the proposal for the payment to Barton Mallow, Mallow for the, in the amount of one million thirty-six thousand one hundred and ninety dollars for their assistance with technology aspects of bond projects, per the recommendation of Jay Grossman, Director of Technology. So moved, Steben.
Gerby. Support.
Thank you. Here on, Mr. Grossman and team. Perhaps you might want to introduce the Barton Mallow group. If I could be so bold as to suggest.
Hello again. So thank you all for entertaining us today. I just wanted to introduce, uh, as we recently passed the, uh, the new bond, uh, some of the technology projects that we'll be working on. I'll be getting some assistance from a consulting group firm who's worked with us since about the past ten years uh, with us, Barton Mallow. They've been involved in a number of our bond projects, as well as assessments of our technology throughout the district. So I wanted to bring them here, the group that I'm going to be working with, that we'll be seeing a lot of over the course of the next eight, nine, ten years as we go through these projects from start to finish. And they sort of assist me with getting the paperwork done, going out to bid, making sure everything is above board and transparent and get the information to you all. So I wanted to take a minute to introduce, got Paul Twig, got Brian, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the last name here.
Jesse.
Jesse, I knew that, it's from the emails, and Michael Terrell, uh, all from Barton Mallow. And just take them over if you want to say hello and welcome. Say a word.
We just wanted to thank you again for bringing us on to be part of this bond work. It's, it's been, we've enjoyed working here for the past ten years. Um, we don't get to see you very often, but hopefully that's a reflection that there aren't many problems. Um, so, you know, if your technology is working well, first and foremost, you have Jay to thank for that. But, you know, hopefully at times, we can be the silent partner behind the scenes.
Again, I want to say thank you all. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them or address them.
Yeah, and I'd like to just add that, um, Paul and his trusted team from Barton Mallow, uh, have been with us for a long time. We could be going directly with our construction management teams, technology firms, but have chosen over the years um, because of the trust and the relationship to specifically use Paul and his team. So I think there's a credit to, uh, developing relationships and people you trust. And, um, certainly, we want to reward that relationship.
I just want to say thanks for the chart. It's very helpful. The Gantt-like chart you have in here, it's very helpful. I'm gonna print that up and put it on my office wall.
I'm going to hold them to it as well.
Are there any other questions for the team? Oh, well, let's put this to a vote. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, team. So we have four-ish, five, yeah, there's a, there's a four and a, four, four and a double and a twofer, uh, coming up. So, uh, the first is I would like to, uh, we've had these discussions before on these four pol, four and a half policies. Uh, we'll just work through them one after the other. Um, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the updates to policy eighty-five-ten, the wellness policy as recommended by the policy committee. Policy chairs, welcome to pitch in and this.
I'll make that motion. Miller.
Support Gold.
Thank you. So any discussion now on this from the rest of the team? We are ready to take, put it to a vote then. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We have, policy eighty-five-ten has been updated. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the updates to policy eighty-three, right, uh, updates to policy eighty-three-ninety, animals on district property as recommended by the policy committee.
Motion Gerby.
Support Eastut.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on animals on district property? Let's put this to a vo, no, put this to a vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor, we have seven zero then. Thank you. We now have a policy on animals on district property. Now, we also, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a new policy, 8390.1, therapy dogs, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
Motion, Miller.
Thank you.
Support Gold.
Alrighty. Is there any discussion on this? Well, hearing none. Could we be like I said, every meeting? No, that would be sad.
Well, because I've already had two.
We have had two readings, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Moving on to the next, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt new policies, 3362.01, and, we'll do them both at the same time, because they are identical, 4362.01, threatening behavior towards staff members, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
Glad to make this motion. Gerby.
Support Steben.
And when I say identical, almost identical. So is there any discussion on these at this point?
I guess I can just explain for anybody who's listening and didn't hear the last two, that the reason why they are identical is because they go under two different areas of our policies. So one will be under teaching staff, and one will be under, I think it's, is it support staff?
Support staff, yeah.
Yeah, support staff. That's why.
So they're identical-ish.
They are identical, but one will fall, we have different sections of policy, so they fall under two different sections of policy for two different groups.
Thank you. All, and I'm gonna put it to a vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you. The next part is a quick, two actual discussion items. I was talking to trustee Eastep beforehand, and she asked a few interesting questions that are going to help guide what I'm about to say. The WISD, as opposed to what I usually talk about, the WASB, the Washtenaw Association of School Board, this is the Washtenaw Independent Intermediate, Intermediate School District, that's right. They do not have their elections the same time as we have them. They have theirs biennial, biennially, every two years, but they're in June. So that it doesn't look like we are, oh, I've got to back up. The public as a whole doesn't vote for those trustees. In fact, one representative from each of the nine districts votes for those trustees, and in this case, there are two openings. There are special rules, as you read in the packet, of who, how many can run from each district, two at a maximum. And we have two folks rolling off, and on May 8th, we will know what the slate is. But according to Michigan law, we must demonstrate through a resolution that we on the board are not getting pushed into this at the last second. In fact, we're casually resolving to consider sending somebody up to the WISD offices in a month and a half to place a vote. We don't have to determine who that person is yet, or who we're voting for, but at the next board meeting, we're going to make that decision. So, right now, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution to consider the designation of an electoral representative, as submitted by the WISD Superintendent Naomi Norman.
So moves, Steben.
Thank you.
Support Eastep.
Thank you. Susan, Eastep. So, is there any discussion or questions about that whole process? I think this, it really does seem to be that we just need to, we don't want to have this thrown at us, we're not doing this capriciously and rushing into it. So for the next two weeks, we'll consider this. So, well, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Alright, the motion passes. We now have a quick meeting, oh, and there is a signature for you, there's a document for you to sign, Secretary.
Yes.
This tonight.
Tonight, okay.
It'll be electronically or somehow sent up to Naomi Norman's office.
Yeah, no problem.
So we had a Policy Committee meeting last week, and Secretary Chair of the Policy Committee, Jenny Miller, will update us.
So we had a meeting last week, and at that meeting, we discussed kind of what we had collected so far, from public feedback and from our own research and laws to consider. We also are finding that, should we end up proposing updates to this particular policy, it's kind of a cascading effect, that it will potentially impact other policies, and we will then add those to our agenda to consider in upcoming meetings. So at this particular meeting, each of the three policy members and Steve shared ideas, potential revisions, and we had a discussion around those. We also had a number of public attend, and we had, I think, 10 different people commented in public comment, either before or after or both. And so, all of these things are things that we're taking into consideration as we move forward, but the work is not done. This is a lengthy process. So we are meeting again on Monday, May 1st, at 6:30 in this room. We will be meeting again, and so we will continue the work and the discussion, and continue to work toward either revising or editing, and/or editing the current policy or a new policy. So, again, it's a work in progress. We are inviting public feedback, if you'd like to email myself, or trustee Eastep, or trustee Gold, the three policy members, or all three of us, or Dr. Lott, who also sits in our committee meetings. We are welcoming public feedback as we continue to work through, through this policy that is currently called controversial issues. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, where we are right now.
Thank you. This is hard work, for sure. We, I'd like to open the floor now to administration and board updates. We'll start with Dr. Lott. Next would be, right, right on. And we'll just work from Tim Austin. I'm sorry?
She's just very cool.
It's chill.
Chill.
Chill. Well, I got that from Superintendent Lott.
Thank you.
Okay, first off, I should have mentioned previously that Kurt, Miranda, and Rex are not here, because they're at MSBO Conference, and so I meant to mention that at the beginning of the meeting. I look over there, there's nobody there, that's why. They're at the Business Officials Conference. At any rate, comments. I just want to thank again Neil for being, you know, such a well-rounded and impressive individual, and, you know, enjoys so many different things, yet is already providing such tremendous, you know, accomplishment and value to, you know, society. I mean, it's just really, really impressive, and I think we can all agree that when, when he does win a Nobel Prize, we can all kind of look around the room, oh, I could, I could see that coming. The other thing I wanted to mention today is, we had a great event at the high school in the Media Center called #GetHired, and it was put on by the Southwest Washtenaw Consortium, specifically Mary Viso, who helps do a lot of the more or less internship coordination and co-op programs for our students, but also Dr. Ryan Rowe in support. And there were, you know, 40 to 50 businesses there, and I just loved seeing sort of the trajectory of what our kids can do as it relates to careers. And I went around and spoke to the various groups there, and they all spoke about sort of entry-level positions that people can do right when they get out of high school, a second level, if they're going to trade school, technical school, a third level, if they're getting their degree, four-year university, and then coming to work. And it just, it made me feel that, yep, that's the right path, to give our kids options as they come out, but to get them really interested in all different types of things that were there, from Michigan medicine that was there, the armies there, irrigation companies, Stonebridge Golf Course, showing the different field turf management degrees. Anyway, I just thought it was a great event, I'm really enthused about it, and I feel like we're on the right track, the more we are talking about career awareness for our students. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Principal Stager helped gather this information for tonight, kind of ties into that we have these great teachers at, in our school district. For specifically, this information is related to what I had said at a previous board meeting, which is, Celine High School is recently ranked number 102 nationally for STEM schools, STEM high schools in the United States, and Celine's the highest Michigan high school on the list. That's primarily based on the fact that we have so many students who take and pass these science AP exams. Our 91% pass rate of students that are getting a three, four, or five is the highest in Michigan. And thanks for gathering that data, Ms. Stager. And, because sometimes we do look at standardized data, and even myself, sometimes I'm not valuing it as much as this data, that's really helping prepare students to be successful as they enter college, and that, you know, they're going to get, a lot of them are getting college credit right when they go in with this. So I think that is a really strong accomplishment for our students, but also our staff, that continue to challenge, but also find ways to make sure that kids are being successful in those courses. And then the final thing I have to say is that I, along with Betty and Cara and a few other Celine area school staff, will be at Celine Slutes tomorrow to support Kim Bryant and our parent, and also Paul Heinecke, a former Board of Ed trustee, they're both receiving awards tomorrow evening, along with some other recipients, so we're looking forward to that.
Well, speaking of science AP tests, I do believe I have one on Monday, AP Environmental Science at 8:00 AM. So, let's hope I can add to that statistic, so. Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, that's mine. So Earth Day was on Saturday, so happy Earth Day. Hope some people were acknowledging the Earth, they're just taking a moment. Again, AP Environmental Science, feel the need to bring that one up. The Celine Area Spring Art Show is on Friday, May 5th, Saturday, May 6th, and Sunday, May 7th, I believe, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. So if you want to see some students' art, none of mine will be there, because I cannot, that's not my area of expertise, but I'm sure there will be other people more talented than mine there. There's another blood drive at the high school. It's on May 8th, it's going to be a smaller one, I do believe it's our last one of the year, so if you haven't donated any blood in the last three weeks, and you feel so inclined on May 8th, feel free to drop by the high school. The back, NHS is doing a backpack drive, so essentially, we're going to be collecting materials like notebooks, pencils, rulers, stuff like that, so if you have any in your house from past children who went to school, and they're just collecting dust, we would be more than happy to take from you. So we'll be dropping off bags, believe, the first week in May, and then we'll be picking them up on May 13th, so just something to amass during the next few weeks. And then the Drama Club is perform, at the high school, is performing their play Speak Easy, which I do believe was written by two Celine High School students. Max Watkins was 100% one of them, so student-written, which I think is kind of cool, on April 28th, 29th, and 30th, and it's only $5 to come in, so why not?
I have a skill testing question or two for you. The blood drive, it's just whole blood, correct? It's not the apheresis machine or anything like that?
Correct, yes.
And so this play coming up, it is actually the world premiere.
It is, that's true.
Awesome. Thank you.
Don't really have much, but I did notice something that was kind of ironic for Celine, that we had two medical emergencies at two different schools yesterday, and I just want to give a shout out to our nurse and staff, and all the people that kind of took care of that, and, you know, they did a really good job, and I appreciate that.
Alright, I was reading that May 2nd is National Teachers' Day, so that'll be a week from today, so shout out to our teachers. And our next board meeting will be in the midst of Staff Appreciation Week, so I'm sure we'll, yeah, so we'll touch on that at that, at that point, Teacher Appreciation Week, but, yeah, so. On behalf of the Finance Department, on May 2nd, I want to also just back up Dr. Lott's announcement at the beginning of the meeting about the importance of the renewal, right? Like, this is an important renewal to our school district. This is $8.5 million. And as you saw in Bulletin 1014, if you were paying attention to our last meeting, we spend our money in the classrooms. So I don't, if $8.5 million, folks, would impact our classrooms. So this money is essential to the work we're doing. It's important to our school district as a whole, and we absolutely have to renew this bond. Like, it's an important thing for your children's education. So, long story short, I'm putting out a stress there to say, May 2nd, please vote.
Okay, I'm just going to reiterate just a couple of things. The art show, thank you for mentioning that, Allison. I do have an artist who will be featured at the show, so if you are, if you are moving around the art show next week, my son is a, I don't know, a potist? He's a pottery student. I don't know how you, what you call a pottery, pottery-ist? I don't know. He's a sculptor? I don't know. Anyways, ceramicist? I don't know. He makes things. I think he'll have a few things in the show, but one in particular, I'll just share, that he brought home, and they were doing pottery to look like their favorite food? I don't know. Anyway, I thought it was, I thought someone had brought me dinner, and I was very disappointed that the Cane's french fries and chicken nuggets were fake. It was so realistic. Yeah, so he's, so yeah, he's the Cane's guy. He's made us several, several pieces of art that adorn our household, and we are thrilled that he will be continuing in his third year of pottery next year as an independent study. So thank you to, to all of his teachers. I also wanted to say that this weekend, I just happened to have an interaction with someone who is in the area of STEM, and her particular job, I just am looking it up again, she specializes in underground storage energy, and she was talking to us a little bit about her job, but her, her passion is around STEM education, and so I was thrilled to be able to brag a little bit about the work that we're doing here in Celine, and that each of our schools is going to have a STEM center, and she was extremely impressed. What she did not tell me is that she also served as a representative in South Dakota. So she is very, very involved in policy and promoting STEM for students. So anyways, it was just really cool to share with her what we're doing here, and she was very impressed, so that was exciting. I also just wanted to, two last things. So the first thing is, with the AP test scores, a couple, couple of, I guess, things, words to students, as you are getting ready for these tests, like I said, I think in the last meeting, when we launched testing season, you've already done the work this year, so, you know, brushing up on things, or rereading notes, and all of that is fine, but getting a good night's sleep, getting, don't stay up all night cramming, getting some good food before you start the test, all of those things are the things that are going to sustain you and give you that brain fuel to do your best on those tests. But the other thing that I just want to say is that we have a lot of students who take these tests, and our hope is that they are able to demonstrate on the test the work that they've done all year, but in reality, sometimes that doesn't happen. And so I just want to say that you are more than your test score, and that if you don't get the score that you expected on this test, not all is lost. In our house, we often say that it's about the experience, and if you, even if you can't test out of a class in college or get college credit, the skills that you did learn, how to study, how to research, how to grow as a student, are going to be there for you when you do take the college classes. And I've experienced that myself, and I've watched my daughter take those skills. I have proofread papers from other college students, and I'm here to say that those kids who, who are coming out of Celine, their writing is just remarkable. So, congratulations to those kids, but just keep in mind that if it doesn't work out the way you intended, it's not, not all is lost. The last thing that I wanted to say is that I'm also supporting the renewal on May 2nd. I may not always agree with the way schools are funded in Michigan, it was reformed while I was in school, I remember, so I may not always agree with the structure, but this is the structure that we live in, and this is the way the state expects us to get a large portion of our funding. And so, you know, I don't remember exactly, 20 or 30 years ago, the way schools were funded was different, and it was a local tax, and so this is supposed to be a more equitable way, and we can argue that. I won't get into the specifics, but what I will say is that this does not mean that we haven't been, you know, financially responsible with the dollars that we are given, this is a part of that equation. So this is a part of the money that we get to support students in learning, and as Treasurer Gerby stated, we put Gerby stated, we put all ninety, ninety-something percent, the highest percentage in the surrounding area into our classrooms. So, thank you for your support in that, and if you have questions, you can reach out to anyone on, on this panel, but also, there's information on the school website. Thank you.
Thank you. I was asked last week by a board member to consider creating a template for onboarding to some of the standing committees, so, I'm working on one for Policy Committee, I'm going to ask Treasurer Gerby to work on one for the Finance Committee, and then we'll pass it along. This isn't for us as much as it's for the future board members who are going to be coming on, so, it's, it's for, it's for the future, and, so thank you to that. And the other thing I wanted to add is that the SEAB, the Sex Education Advisory Board applications are now available on the main, you can get a link to them on the main Celine Area Schools website, and the correct pronunciation is SEAB. I'm laying it down, boom.
Plus one to comments on the vote on May second, and hope to see everyone voting yes at the polls. And just a quick shout out, we are home from Washington DC, so thank you Coordinator Lori Dawson, Assistant Principal Lindsay Getner, a special thank you to Kristin Gerbacher and Marcus Jones, my fearless leaders on Bus Six. You know, I, I always enjoy reading Steve's updates on, on Fridays about what he saw in the buildings, and, and, so, I can tell you what I saw were some exhausted parents and kids, but what I mostly saw were, and this is remarkable to say about eighth graders, but no matter what social group individuals were in, or club, or sport, or whether they were Google Classroom, or whether they were Summit Learning, I saw everyone being respectful and kind and getting along together and really enjoying the trip. And so I just wanted to thank everyone involved, the students for their good behavior and being good ambassadors for Celine Area Schools, the other parent chaperones who were a lot of fun, and all of our staff that went, and our bus drivers who were amazing, so, thank you.
All right, so, I would like to start by saying, vote yes, because I can say that on the, the ballot for the operating millage renewal on May second, so go vote, and hopefully you will vote yes. And then, let me see, so I have, so, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and this is a good lead-in into the meeting that we had last week with the Sex Ed Advisory Board, SEAB, thank you. So, SEAB was given a presentation from the Washtenaw Area Council for Children, who provides programs to schools in Washtenaw County. This program is age-appropriate for young children to learn to recognize sexual abuse and how to report to adults. Michigan law supports school districts in implementing child sexual abuse awareness and prevention programs. So, the SEAB has unanimously decided to move forward with this through the recommendation process, as outlined through board policies and state law, of course. No official announcements or dates have been set that I know of, but we will definitely keep you posted on when those public hearings are, and those opportunities to, you know, get feedback through those public hearings, which are separate from the board meetings, but then, you know, hopefully eventually we'll come to the board, so you'll have lots of opportunities to learn about that. And President McVeigh actually mentioned the call for applications for the Sex Education Advisory Board, which, which are three-year terms, and again, like, state law specifically kind of outlines what the makeup of that board should look like. And I'm hoping that this information will be advertised more widely in the coming weeks, because I've kind of found it here and there, so, I know, you know, that's, that process, application process, I believe, is in early May, so hopefully we can get some information out there. I'm looking forward to the board reps being involved in the review process this round, just, again, to be consistent with policy and law, so, I think that's it.
I just have a couple of things, I'd like to highlight that this is National Library Week this week, so I'd like to thank our partners at Celine District Library, as well as all the media specialists throughout the various schools. I love the library, from being a little girl at my very rural dirt road, I could, like, walk down to our library, to the libraries of the University of Michigan, to the library here in Celine, and taking my kids to Story Hour and beyond, I'm just a huge fan of public libraries, I think it, it still amazes me that, like, our tax money goes to having these amazing buildings full of books and resources and more. And I'd like to highlight Right to Read Day with a tax on the freedom to read what we would like to read, and have free and full libraries, so that is April twenty-fourth, and again, just thanking the media specialists and librarians and our taxpayers for supporting libraries, I think they're really important. And then, I also just want to mention that the Wellness Committee, which I sit on, will have our last meeting, it's yet to be decided in May, but if you have ideas or input regarding student wellness, feel free to email me. Thanks.
Thank you, colleagues. I'd like to go into the consent agenda right now. The consent agenda is listed in this agenda that's published and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that they, that any one or all be considered individually. So, I'd like to recommend, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
So moves, Deben. Support Gold.
Yes, thank you. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, it's, it's moved. So, we are on to the last page, items scheduled on the next agenda, Mr. Latch.
We have a CARES update, and also the DEIAC will give a scheduled report.
Thank you. Do, yes. We don't even need the piece of paper, Mr. Fan? Thank you.
Good evening, Chang Ming Fan, local social entrepreneur, University of Michigan alumni, I'm just like all of you, so excited, so happy, and I'd like to say that this is the best evening I have. Our student, Neil Moka, got the highest award, and I have pretty simple thing to say first. Just want to say that I'm very proud to be one of the citizen here, and also, he is going to the University of Michigan, which is, I'm so happy, and I strongly suggest that if he is here, go to the Saturday morning physics, can learn a lot before he get into the student of University of Michigan. Second thing, I want to continue to say something very important, with all my respect, Dr. Lard, you are right, we have you humble, but the great potential is insulin, we have a lot of things we haven't even started yet. The great potential, which has brought me the theory of three boxes, maximize what we have in the box, stay at the edge of the box, and look outside the box too. I just want to focus on this maximize, what we have in the box called SAS, Celine Area Schools. Our student, you already know that, how wonderful they are, how smart, how mature, how ambitious they are, and how successful they are. So many other students, that subteacher, I do know, they're, they're, you shock me, they're so intelligent. So, we have to really be more creative, challenging more, offer them to higher level. Can you tell me? Okay, we'll make sure to, to, we'll talk. And unfortunately, there quite a lot of things we haven't even used it, maybe ten percent of we actually have inside the box. One simple example is the magnet. In Heritage, you can see so, box of mag, magnet, they can play, but if we just put S and N, which is two poles, and they can start thinking, this is one example. And secondly is that we have great faculties here. Stuki was here, eight months ago, I mentioned about that, how to use pottery to create the crispr, and with the Cas nine protein, and then simulate of how the gene editing works. So, our student can definitely can do that, the leaders is way behind, so that's why we got to feel being pushed, thank you.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's, that's, I think I'm okay. They, thank you, Mr. Fan. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on May ninth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty in this here room, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this regular board meeting of April twenty-fifth at nine oh nine and seven seconds, eight seconds.
Gerby, motion.
Miller, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, it's been a great pleasure, I get to gavel is out now. One tap, I'm sorry, did I overdo it?